Welcome to the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Regular Meeting of June the 24th. Roll call.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Protam Smith.
Here.
Mayor Strobel.
Present. And Councilmember Lara, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You may please raise. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we had scheduled a presentation for the Ventura County Fair. Is anyone here with a poster? Okay, we're gonna move along. The next item on our agenda is public comments. And anyone wishing to speak would appreciate you filling out a speaker's card. Limit your comments to three minutes, and this is for anything not on the agenda. Norm Plot, Fire Chief.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, and distinguished guests, Norm Plot, Ventura County Fire Department Fire Chief. Just an update to the Fourth of July fireworks presentation that'll take first, take place on the Fourth of July at Nordoff High School. We've added some additional safety measures after the incident that we had last year. We'll be having Engine 22 attend the fireworks display there. We'll have a fire prevention officer on standby there. We're gonna be bringing in Ventura County Fire Department hand crew for the Bassant Meadows area in the event that we'd get any fallout over that way from any of the projectiles. And then, we're also setting up a treatment area in the event that we had anybody injured and bringing in the mass casualty trailer that's assigned to the city of Ojai. We'll be placing that at Nordoff High School, working with the Sheriff's Department. So, just wanna bring you up to date on that. And also, a follow-up to the hydrant flow testing issue. We met today with the members of Golden State Water, and we have hydrant flow testing that's gonna take place on July 7th. We identified fourteen hydrants that will test the six different systems that represent the Golden State Water's hydrant area. So, we'll be conducting that starting on July the 7th. So, just wanted to bring you up to speed on those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Miller.
Hi, I'm here as a supporter of the skate park, and I'd like to give my three minute to Sunday Rylander.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel, members of the City Council. I wanted to comment on your item 1A on waiving the, or reading the text ordinance. It's a very good idea because it's a time saver, but I'd like to ask that you do two things to further involve the public. One is that you should try a little harder in the description of the ordinance to give people an idea what it's about. And then, since you already automatically, by law, are required to attach the materials to the agenda, cross-reference those. That way, you serve the purpose of not reading the full text, but also providing the full information that the public might wanna look at and participate in the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Adonda McGrath Brennan.
Hi. I just wanted to speak to a couple of things that came up at a couple of the meetings. The first is the April 22 meeting about the municipal code violations at the skate park. And some of the things that came up were that there were nine helmet violations and nine skate park violations. And I wondered if that meant skate park as in specifically skate park, or did that mean the park and ride, the whole area? And were the violations, I'm kinda hoping that the violations were you or other police officers speaking to bicyclists and scooter kids. That needs to be addressed, obviously. That's a main violation that's not, that seems to be just slipping by. So, I understand, of course, that they, at the skate park, have to be wearing helmets, and of course, that should be noticed and addressed, but please don't ignore the scooters and the bicyclists, 'cause that's a huge, huge safety issue, and it's destroying the park. I'm speaking on behalf of my dad, Richard McGrath, who also gave a lot of money to skate park and would never have done so if it was just specifically going to be destroyed and if violations were going to be ignored. There were, it was one of the top ten call spots, and I'm wondering what the other ten call spots were. Are these just parks, you know? Is it people at parks? I don't know. I don't know what that means. The other thing that kinda came up with me is that the very last meeting, things started seeming ugly, the way that specifically skateboarders were being spoken about. And my son is a skateboarder. Of course, he's many other things. He's my son. I definitely don't wanna hear any kind of remarks that seem out of what you, as a City Council, should be representing in your words. You have this independent, impartial, and fair with an atmosphere of civility in your second paragraph and your, I guess it's a message statement. I don't know what that is for you guys, but it wasn't sounding like, it wasn't sounding like that, your mission statement. Yeah. So, let's really try to keep it that way, 'cause I take really great offense to the way some of the things were sounding. You know, our, my son is, my son, happens to be that his chosen sport is skateboarding, and it's been great for him. I'm glad that it is. You know, people deserve to have things that they're good at, they enjoy, and it deserves to be respected. Thank you.
Just for your information, this will be on the agenda of August the 12th, and at that time, I'm sure our chief will be ready to answer all of these questions. I'm not going to, unless you want to make a comment, I'm not going to request that you respond at this point. Wendy Hilgers.
Hi there, Wendy Hilgers, citizen and member of Skate Ojai, and I just wanted to bring this poster with me because Mayor Strobel often tells me that nothing can get done without the input from the citizens of the community. And last, the last City Council meeting I was at, things seemed to take a quick turn in this room, which made it very, seeming to be very hostile and unfriendly to a lot of people, not only here, but people who were watching. And so, I'll show you this. And it's out of the, it's out of the city handbook, and if you don't mind, I just wanted to put it up here for a second. And I just wanted to say, the item on the agenda at the last meeting was the lighting at the skate park, but it took a turn very fast to the topic of supervision at the skate park. Nothing about that had been noticed. Nobody knew that was going to be the topic of discussion. Nobody was here who would have wanted to come to address the problem and to see what it was all about and to offer solutions, you know, to really get together, define the issue. And it was very disturbing to a lot of people. And part of the problem was that chief presented a lot of papers to Mayor Protam Smith describing violations at the skate park, but there'd been no introduction of that material. Nobody here had that material, and that was where the discussion turned about this problem area, this.
He did not give me anything that other people.
I, I didn't.
Didn't she get to talk?
I didn't say he gave you anything. I just said he waved it around.
Why are you interrupting her?
Quiet.
Anyway.
I'm correcting her.
Let's.
Oh, really? You have the answer?
Stop it. We have someone at the desk. We're going to listen to her respectfully.
Yes, respectably.
Quiet. Sorry, Wendy, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I didn't say you had it. I said he was.
No, let's move on.
Okay. Anyway, the next day, after that meeting, I went to the City Hall to ask if I could get a copy of whatever those papers were that were being discussed without being presented. And the clerk did not have them, but she said she would get them from the police chief, which made me believe nobody here had those papers that were being talked about. So, shortly later, a little bit later, she called me and said she had gotten these from the police department, and it was a list, it was a list, I'm fumbling here. It was just a list like this. It says nothing. It just has a date and a word and a, anyway, and I gave that to each of you. So, that just didn't seem right to me. So, I went down to the county where you can get the public records for service calls, and I did that. I went to the Sheriff's Department, and I did get that because he was quoting the over a hundred calls in six months, so I wanted to see what that was all about. So, I went down there, I got, I pulled the ones for Sarasodi Park, the vicinity of the skate park, which includes the park and ride, not just the skate park, and Libby Park. And I put, just to give you an idea of what this showed, here is the list, here's a list, a representative list that he gave me, of the calls, service calls to the skate park vicinity. Here's the call, number of calls to.
Speak into the microphone.
Here are the calls to Libby Park, same period of time.
Wow.
Six months. So, I really had a lot of questions about that, but I just wanted to show, you know, the difference. There's no explanation. When I talked to the gal at the sheriff's window down at the county, and she gave me the figures, I made a list. Here's an example. I'll just give you an example real quick. Sarasodi Park had a hundred and forty-six service calls in that same timeframe. These are all the six-month period that's listed on here. Of those, forty-seven had some word, maybe two words, which would say what the incident was about. Ninety-nine said nothing at all. Ninety-nine of the calls said nothing on either set of papers. Vicinity of the skate park, pretty close, a hundred and thirty-six service calls, forty-eight had a word, eighty-eight said nothing. Libby Park, three hundred and twenty-five service calls, a hundred and nineteen had a word or two, two hundred and six said nothing at all. So, you know, there are a lot of things to be considered, but this needs to be not, not just bandied about when nobody has an understanding of what the issue is. In order to understand what the problem is, you have to go over the list and see what the issue is. What are the calls for? And that's a request that I'm making to you now. I'm asking.
Finish up.
In order to discuss the problem, direct the police chief to state what each call was for and what the outcome of the call was, so we can see where it was, what it was, and also that you direct the police chief for a period of at least one month to enforce all sections of the municipal code as posted at the skate park, and then we'll have a better picture. Just contain that little window of activity there, and let's see what we're really dealing with. The skate, the helmets, the scooters, and the bikes. You've gotta address all those things. It worked for a long time, and it took a really bad turn, and now the skaters are out.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
We, we plan to have this on, or a discussion on the agenda for August the 12th. It sounds to me as though we also need to have a community workshop. Any of the other council members agree, disagree?
Madam Mayor, I would think we might have to have a community workshop, but I'd like to get the details on the calls before we have the community workshop, so we can see exactly what the problems have been there. Until we know what the problem is, I don't think we can address it.
Madam Mayor, I think a lot of the discussion was two issues, too, that I don't wanna get confused. One is abiding by the rules in the skate park, and also the issue of service calls, which seem to be, need to be isolated out as well. So, I agree that we need to have more clarification on the service calls, whether they were for skate park violations or just service calls to that general vicinity and what they were for.
I agree. And I would, I, I still kinda stay with a workshop on the 12th, and I would anticipate we would get the information before then, so that we can review it. Now, how we can make the quote, "questions and answers" available to the public prior to that, I'll leave to Mr. Clark. Councilmember Lara?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Also, it would be good just to see what the history has been in the skate park, just so the public could be informed. That would be my only addition. Just the history of the ongoing issues that they've had in the past, 'cause I was aware of some of these issues when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I just think that it would be beneficial for everybody to hear.
And I'm going to repeat what I said at the last meeting, and that is, I would like to see us stop the problem at the gate. Now, someone to monitor the gate as opposed to, quote, "supervised," a supervised gate, skate park. Is there a way that we can separate the issue of supervision from gate monitor? And since the skate park, the preference is that it be open from dawn to dusk. See, I'm getting into a discussion on an agenda item. But since it's going, we have it open from dawn to dusk, would you research and see if we could come up with a, maybe a hybrid type of volunteer, city employee, you know, a volunteer supervision until X time? You get the idea. I feel that we need to find a way to stop the problem at the gate. If that means, I apologize, I'm getting into a discussion, and that's not appropriate. So, August 12th, we'd like to discuss all those things.
Madam Mayor, if I could just for a moment, I wanna have a better understanding of the problem before we talk about the problem, but I also wanna point out that we approved the lights the last meeting, and I certainly hope that whatever we're doing from the standpoint of trying to get to the bottom of the problem, whatever that is that exists, that that doesn't stop anything with regard to the lights that we approved.
All right. Do you have an idea other, beyond the, a workshop on the 12th? Do we need to have a special meeting? Do, how, how would you like us to address getting the information to you?
Mr. Clark, when, when are we bringing this back before the council?
So, our current plan is to bring it back on August 12th, but we had also thought of meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission prior to that and the Skateboard Committee prior to that, to get their input, so.
Perhaps we can make those joint meetings?
And there is a joint meeting. There's a workshop with the Park and Recreation Commission coincidentally scheduled on August 12th. So, they, we will have the opportunity to talk with them in workshop format for the first hour.
Okay, but I, I think Councilmember Blatz is looking for something prior to that, before that time.
Yeah, I would like to, I find that it's not, it's not gonna be very beneficial, as I see it, for the community to have a workshop to discuss problems with the skateboard park if we don't know what the problems really are. So, we have to have that information beforehand, and I'm hoping that, I don't know, what are we, in July, what is our, what do we have on our agenda items for July? If there isn't some way, we could just bring it back before the council with some more specific information before then, including some of the information that you're looking at as regard to other parks in the county and those that are supervised, those that aren't supervised.
I, I think the, the regular July meeting is pretty full because we canceled the July 7th meeting. The plan that we had, coming back on the 12th, included providing information with the agenda when it circulated. If that's not sufficient, then I'd suggest that we just arrange a special meeting at some other time, dedicated solely to the skateboard park, maybe have a joint, maybe make it a joint meeting of the City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission in a workshop format, where we lay out the information that we've gathered prior to you coming back and making decisions on policy.
Madam Mayor, I would like to agree to a, to be in a combination meeting between Park and Rec and, and the council. I think those are really productive meetings because it just, everyone's there. Everyone hears what everybody says. There's not second-hand information, and I think it's just much more beneficial.
Okay, so perhaps we can schedule a, a special meeting, the end of July, or?
Yeah, well, I, I think I need to go back to my staff and find out when we're gonna have all the information together, and then I'll, I'll work with the mayor on finding a time when we can have that, that joint workshop where we would present the information.
And I know that you're making notes on the, the comments and questions asked by the public, and so when we schedule a special meeting, I would like staff to be prepared to answer those questions, to respond to the, the council and any backup that we may need, so that we can understand those questions.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
One more, Madam Mayor. And somewhere in there, Skate Ojai's gonna be included, right, to get their input? Okay. Just, thank you.
Okay, so we'll have, the joint meeting will anticipate the City Council, Parks and Rec Commission, and Skate Ojai, and the public. Of course, it's, public's always invited. Xavier Q U I Z V O Z, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Is that right?
How do you pronounce that?
Yeah, I think that's me. Um.
I didn't see anyone else coming forward.
Um, I guess I just wanted to make a few quick comments and give a voice to a few people that may or may not, or usually don't come to these type of meetings. And, and it's regarding the skate park, and I've been using that park since it opened. I was in third grade. I just graduated from Occidental College, and I still use the skate park. I use it frequently. And I'm going into medical school, and from what I saw from the last meeting was kinda some things that offended a lot of people, but, and it's these issues that keep coming up, or problems that we're addressing. But, uh, and I also, sorry, I also visited a few of the other skate parks to see how supervision is working for them, and from, from talking to the people that are working at the other skate parks, I found out that them being there didn't change a whole lot. I mean, it did at the beginning, but in the end, things ended up being relaxed, the rules, and I don't know, I guess it's just, I guess I'm, I don't know what I'm trying to say anymore, 'cause I came in thinking something else, and hearing people speak, I have different opinions now. But, uh, I think Ojai's a remarkable place with remarkable people, and we're just really lucky to have everything that we have in our small community. And, uh, I guess I'm gonna wait till the next meeting to hear more about this, 'cause I would also like to be more informed before speaking, but just wanted to come up here. Thank you.
And I'd like us to take the cards that we have and see if we can create a mailing list, so that people are advised of the, the special meeting. I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I'd like that done. Jim Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, police chief, citizens. I'm a school teacher in Ojai. Been a school teacher here for 14 years. I've worked with the Ojai Valley Youth Foundation, running a leadership project for seven years, working with junior high and high school students and mentors. Severo Laura was one of them, and also, he's worked on the leadership project for a long time. I'm an avid skateboarder, and I'd like to think that I'm not a degenerate. I'd like to think I'm a useful member of society. I haven't bought any six-packs and parked on Fox Street in a long, long time. And I wanted to share my experience in the last seven months of skating at the skate park quite a lot, and there's a lot of generational diversity at the skate park that didn't seem to be represented in the comments, and I've met some really amazing, beautiful people. I met a guy from Orange County, very religious man. He was 52. He works at Lowe's, and we skated for about two hours together and had a great time talking about raising our kids. There's a kid I know from San Diego. He's got his master's degree in history. We talked about agrarian reform in ancient Rome, and we skate there every other weekend. There's a guy who's here tonight, Todd Farmer, an amazing electrician in Ojai. That guy skates the bowl beautifully, you know, just the people, there's a vast, vast generational diversity that didn't seem to be understood, and I've seen this before. I've been surfing since I was young, and they did the same thing to the surfers. Now, look at the judges and the lawyers and everybody who's out there wanting to stand up with one of those, you know, paddle boards. And, and I really think that's prejudicial to assume that it's a bunch of kids that need to be babysat. I've been there a lot, and there are a lot of older people who enjoy that skate park and get a lot of use out of that world-class bowl. There's a lot of people who come from other places. I think we're being short-sighted if we don't go with the lights and we just go with the problems, because I know people who come from out of town, they come here to skate that bowl, and then their wives, sometimes it's women, mostly it's the men. There's a huge resurgence in skating of people in my age. There's an article in LA Times, Los Angeles Times in the last two years, all about this. And then, everybody afterwards are going to Ojai Pizza. They're taking the kids to Bliss. I mean, this thing actually brings people to town, and it adds to the economic, economic diversity of Ojai, so benefits us economically. Lot of different generations at the skate park. And the idea, a quick story about supervision, non-supervision. My daughter and I were on our way to Moreno Valley to visit my mom. I had my daughter check to see if there's any skate parks on the way. She said, "Yeah, there's this one in Glendale. We pull off the freeway. I'm gonna, you know, got an hour to kill, gonna go skate, get some food." Supervised skate park, it's closed on Saturday, nobody there, we were too early. Got back in the car, hit the road. Different story. My friend, who's 45, I'm 44, our other buddy's 42, two of us have kids, they come up from Long Beach to skate Ojai, and then later, we drive to Santa Clarita to try that park. Unsupervised park, we get to skate for hours. Afterwards, we all go to the, we spend like 50 bucks on food in Santa Clarita. Didn't spend any money in Glendale. Supervised park, couldn't go skate. Spent money in Santa Clarita. So, you know, let's, let's get these lights in. There's a lot of guys like me. This is my primary exercise, and.
Finish up.
Okay, primary exercise. So, let's get some lights in there, so we can skate in the evening and the summertime, and I appreciate the approval. And let's not say all skaters are degenerates or babies that need to be babysat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a lot of responsible people.
Madam Mayor, I, I would just, real quick question, sir? I have a real quick question.
Sure.
Did you, did you have your helmet on?
Yeah, um.
And was it latched?
So, I, you know, I'm, I'm the part of the crew, I'm the.
Did you have your helmet on?
Yes, I'm the, all the pads. I'm an old guy with pads. Old guy with pads.
Okay, okay. You're clearly an example in the community, 'cause you teach.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad to hear that. Were the other older gentlemen there, did they have their helmets on?
Yeah, 'cause we're not as good as those young kids, and I will say.
Okay, okay, I have one other question.
Those, yes, we're not as good as those kids. They don't fall like we fall.
Okay, and another question for you.
Yes.
Is, no, one other thing I wanted to say, just as a clarification, I don't think anybody said skateboarders were degenerate.
Okay.
I think that the discussion here that night was our frustration at the bikes and the scooters in the park and the lack of following the rules.
Yeah.
No one ever said a skateboarder was a degenerate.
Well, the six-packs and.
That's all. That's all.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, scooter park. We need a scooter park.
Thank you. And I want to remind everyone after I violated what I'm about to say myself, I want to remind everyone that this is an unscheduled item to the extent possible. I'd like to keep, I'd like us to be able to hear the comments in response to what I see is a, is something very important to our, our community. I'd like, we're going to have a special meeting so that we can get all of these comments and some dialogue. But this isn't the time to do it. It's unscheduled. And so there are many people out there who do not have the opportunity to discuss this that might wish to discuss it because it is not agendized. So I would like us to listen to the comments and hold a special meeting to get, well, you've got it. Tom Erickson?
Hi, hi, I'm sorry. Was your point that we should not make any more comments about skate park?
No, no, no.
Okay. Because that's what I came for.
I want to, I want to hear our speakers. This is an unscheduled item.
Yes.
Limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes, okay.
If possible, avoid dialogue back and forth because it's not an agendized item.
That's fine. Thank you. My name's Tom Erickson. I've lived in Ojai for 40 years. I helped raise six children here. My youngest son has probably used the skate park more than any other Ojai kid since the original temporary park. He and his friends worked long and hard helping to maintain the original park and through Skate Ojai to build this park, to help build this park. These days, he's very discouraged by the flood of scooters and bikes in the park, especially the scooters because they directly interfere with skaters at the park. Riding a scooter or a bike requires no special skill compared to the months of learning and practicing any skateboarder must have before even venturing into a skate park. These non-skaters lack the training and skateboard etiquette that allows skaters to use the park safely. So this is the real safety issue at the park, not the helmet law. There are some in this community who have been dragged, who have had to be dragged kicking and screaming toward providing our own town with the benefit of a skate park. And these same people keep making scurrilous remarks about our youth, droning on about helmet safety and beer-drinking girlfriends while ignoring the real problem of unsafe use of the park and damage to the premises. When we were raising funds and designing the park, there was always complete understanding that the park is designed for skateboarding, not scooters and bikes. Scooters and bikes have many metal parts that damage the surfaces, especially the, the edge coping. Why are these violations not being enforced? I'm fairly certain that a few $275 tickets would go a long way toward deterring this vandalism. If a bunch of unsupervised five-year-olds went a-scootering on the skate, on the tennis courts at Libby, would they not be ticketed? Instead, what do we get? More helmet tickets? There've been a rash of helmet tickets? No other skate park enforces helmet rules. Skateport, skateboarding is legally considered a hazardous sport. That means that by law, people who skateboard do go at their own risk and thus the city cannot be held liable for their injuries. There's no need for supervision. In fact, supervision actually creates liability for the city. This is not the case for scooters or bikes, however. Must we wait for the parents of an injured scooter kid to sue the city before we wake up and smell the coffee? All of the recent rash of helmet tickets should be rescinded. There are obviously discriminatory retaliation against skateboarders who would just like to have lights for the park and be free of the scourge of scooters and bikes. These issues were debated endlessly during the years leading up to the building of the park and now we're having our noses rubbed in them again when all that was required from the council was an affirmation of a long-held goal of Skate Ojai, lights for the park and for which funds have already been raised. The time for obstruction is in its past. The park is built. This is a problem that could be easily solved. Simply enforce the no-scooters and no-bike rule and leave the skateboarders alone. I'd like the council to put on its agenda a protocol, a, a proposal to do just that. Thank you. And thank you for your service, by the way. Thank you.
You're welcome. Maggie?
Close.
Thank you. Simonaro.
Maggie Simonaro, hi. Mayor Strobel, council members. Um, yeah, I am really happy to be, uh, the youth director and new generations director of the Rotary Club of Ojai, which I get to, uh, spend the lunch on Friday with Mr. Clark here, who's also a member. And, um, I'm not here representing them. I'm just here as a parent that raised four kids in the valley. Um, two of my boys, I've had heartache of substance abuse and problems that having lived through has kind of sent me on a path and hopefully you will all join it. And that's, that's really to do what we can for the kids and not, not do something because there's going to be a faction and there's going to be trouble. There's always going to be trouble with kids. We know that. We can't stop it at the gate. They don't know the gate. The gate's like the Hollywood Park and the gate is open at that age. I think, you know, I know on behalf of myself and I know for the Rotary Club that anything that happens, get the lights going. If there's something that comes up, let's get it together. You guys care about the city. You care about your youth. God forbid, I mean, the Skate Ojai, I mean, they're just amazing and it's really, the thing that's just gut-wrenching is when these things happen that, that pull this, all of you apart. And it seems like you're doing something against this and, and it just gets to be this really jumble. And I think that, that if we, all of us just kind of cool down and take a break and see that we really all want the right thing. But again, as, as a governing body, you know, let's, let's forage ahead and do what we can for the kids and, and help the kids and not charge and not do this and, and we'll deal with it. We'll all deal with it. Mr. Bailey will be out there every single day, you know, with his pads and providing the good example and everything. But I appreciate, I know that you all, your hearts are all in this great town as well as all the people that are sitting here, you know? And, and you know what? After four hours of a council meeting, I might want to go down on Fox Street and have a few beers too. I'm not teasing, I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's an open dialogue. We all don't say perfect things all the time. So anyway, thank you so much and, uh, you know, for the kids and please, you know, let's join with the different service groups. We can do it together. All right. Thank you.
Phil Wierig?
I feel uncomfortable saying, about to say something so dry and analytical and nothing. Uh, I wanted to follow up on the fire hydrant discussion. Um, I, uh, be very short. Sorry, out of term. Rhonda was extremely helpful because the anchor of the response of Golden State to the city manager's fire hydrant inquiry was their master plan that was turned in before Mr. Clark's tenure started. Rhonda found it, gave me a call, said, "Come on down and look at it." I did and I dug into it and I just wanted to reiterate an issue. It is great news to hear from our fire chief that he will be looking at the 14 tests of fire hydrants out of the, what was it, 500 or something? It's a great step forward. However, it's worth noting that buried in that general plan in a disc in the back, not in the printed part, is something that Golden State calls the Ojai Water Distribution System Field Testing Protocol. Well, I read it. And the point here is that the fire hydrant testing protocol that the fire department's relying on from Golden State, Golden State doesn't acknowledge have anything to do with the functionality of the fire hydrants. It has to do with calibrating their hydraulic model. In other words, it has to do with how much flow is available at the city, at the tap, at the bottom of the fire hydrant, not whether the fire hydrant actually works or not. And when you, for example, the, the purpose is to verify and calibrate the computer hydraulic model. This whole field testing protocol that they did back in '08 was nine points. In other words, all they're doing is using the fire hydrants as ports to test the hydraulic model and calibrate the hydraulic model. Again, to reiterate, it has nothing to do with guaranteeing the functionality of the fire hydrants. And so I just think that it's important that, that maybe we take, uh, more steps between the Golden State Water Company and the Ventura County Fire Department to develop a protocol which actually guarantees that the fire hydrants work because the flow in the pipes that the hydrant is attached to doesn't guarantee that you get flow out of the fire hydrant itself, especially if it hasn't been opened and looked at for years. And finally, I just want to make a point that yet buried in this Ojai Water Distribution System Field Testing Protocol is a statement that, uh, in bold, uh, it is recommended that only steamer hydrants be used for testing. Wharf hydrants typically produce insufficient fire flow. I'm not an expert on this, but I just Googled what a wharf hydrant is. It's basically a hydrant attached to a four-inch line implying that any fire hydrant attached to a four-inch line does not provide sufficient fire flow. And we have them with some of those still. So I just wanted to do a little follow-up and invite everyone to actually read the, the master plan that Rhonda found. It's enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Golden?
I too am here to spread good cheer. From the Chair of the Arts Commission, I'd like to share something with you. So if you just give me a second here, Rhonda's going to help me. We're very excited to present to you, uh, your latest purchases from the acquisitions committee of the, um, Arts Commission. These are some very unique and different photographs by the wonderful Phil Harvey. Um, these are not of Ojai. I'm going to, I'm going to come up around, just going to hold them both together. This is a DIP-Tech, so they go together. And I don't know if the camera can pick that up or not. I'm going to go up there. You, you will see that these are not the quintessential photographs of the post office, which we all love and that Phil is so well-known for here. And our acquisitions committee, Mimi Moore is the chair of that and Barbara Hirsch and Linda Harmon sit on that committee, I think have done a phenomenal job. I can't even begin to tell you the amount of work that has gone into getting these photographs at this size and this resolution. And the next step, of course, is to put them into frames. And as long as I'm mentioning that, um, I will also mention to you that we have plans on installing some more of the permanent art collection in the halls that are currently being used for city gallery and then having some sort of reception for the public. Uh, because the public may not know the art that it owns through the city and the collection is really phenomenal. So I wanted you to all to see those photographs. So a little bit of cheer tonight. Thank you for your attention.
Michael Lopez?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. I'm speaking as a member of the Ojai Tennis Community tonight. I'd just like to say not only do the kids on bikes not wearing helmets, the kids on scooters not wearing helmets, also terrorize the tennis courts. So, um, I'm just letting you know that and from what I'm finding out through my own, um, observations is that the sheriff's department is inadequate in supervising these children. And when it comes to us adults asking the kids to please leave, we get cussed out, called a lot of bad names by these kids under 18. So I would like to see, uh, the city, um, discontinue our contract with the sheriff's department and bring back our own police department. Thank you.
Mary Jo Healy?
I'm here tonight in support of the lights for the skate park and I just wanted to share when I heard him reference a master plan that the reason I moved here to raise a family was because they had a youth master plan. And I was so impressed and one of it was our skate park. And 10 years came and went without it happening and it was a long-winded effort that many of people in this room finally had it come to fruition. But when I have my younger son, my older son missed the opportunity to skate because it went to almost 15 years or something and he never really got to enjoy it, moved on with his life. My younger son lives there. And, but his energy was, like when I asked him, "Do you want to play baseball?" when he was younger, he's like, "No, I know what happened with Max and baseball. No way." You know, so he was like, this time I was like, "Come tonight, stand up for this, you, they need you." He's like, "Mom, I saw what you went through for the 10 years with the skate park. It ain't going to happen." And I just was like, I had to come and say, "It's going to happen because our community really needs the lights for this and we don't get to go watch the kids because we're working." And we will have so much more involvement if we can go in the evening and actually watch them and have a place where we can really participate with them. Right now, it's difficult, not only the milieu of few's there, but the timing of what's not available to be with them. And I just, when they get to go, they have natural supervision and they have people involved in their world and they kind of, you know what skateboarding is like. They want you to watch, but it's kind of like if it's not really the scene for the community to participate, it's like, whatever, you know? So if we show this commitment, if we show this support, if we make these lights happen and it doesn't take us 10 years, I would love to hear what you were saying, Mr. Platts, about what's the timeline? We've approved it. How can we participate? How can we get it out there? So none of these other issues stop it because we got to show it's there. We're going to make it a community, invested participation. And that's what I really want my 15-year-old to see, you know, that it's not, you can't be apathetic. You got to participate. And it's not going to take 10 years. So I just want to let you know how much the community would love it to be there and how much we would be there ourselves. And that would naturally make some of the supervision happen. And one more thing, when the kids say to me, I would like, thank the older boys there when they would give Liam the time of day when he was younger or Max when he was really younger. I'd go up and I'd say, "You guys were really good to them. Thank you." And now they're saying it to Liam. I've got parents coming up saying, "Hey, man, we really appreciate how your kid handles our kids and we know it's tough out there." So these kids are really reaching out to each other, to the kids, to the older ones and we would really like this to happen in our community now. Thank you.
Thank you. William Ulrich?
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road and at the risk of, uh, returning to the, I don't know if it was a dry subject or a wet subject, of fire hydrants in the water system. Um, I did a, uh, several public records requests, uh, with, uh, Ventura County Fire Department and, uh, among the requests was the number of VCFD or Golden State flow tests performed 2010 to 2013. These are flow tests requi, requested or observed by Ventura County Fire Department. During that four-year period, there were three. I don't think that that is, that number adequately determines the capacity, functionality, or viability of our fire-water system. Field, during that same period, 2010 to 2013, Field Station 21 and 22 did hydrant inspections. Each year, there were approximately 250 to 310 inspections done out of 351 hydrants in the city. However, I found no indication of communications by Ventura County Fire Department to Golden State of failed or non-compliant hydrants. So it's one thing to do the inspections, but if it doesn't get communicated to the right folks and they actually do something about it, I think I would posit that that is ineffectual. Purpose of flow tests, by the way, is to confirm design compliance and operational capacity of the system, as Mr. Wierig referenced, not hydrant functionality or even water comes out of them because that being cracked perhaps by, uh, the field personnel from Station 21 or 22 doesn't determine that the fire hydrant in fact works. Ventura County Fire Department hydrant inspections do not, in short, verify water flow. Accordingly, between these two partial inspection and testing methodologies, there's no verification of the fire-water system viability aside from Golden State Waters' verbal and written assertions, which since they are usually clothed or made up in whole cloth of incomplete, partial, or self-serving statements, I would impugn their reliability. And finally, on another matter, given the importance of insignificance to the city's second unit housing compliance situation, there has been no attendance for the last three Ojai Valley Sanitation District Board meetings by the city council liaison, Ms. Smith. For, this is not acceptable.
Thank you. I have one more speaker card, and then I'm going to, I have a question for the council. Jesse Brooks?
I would like to come up here and speak about the skate park and getting a bike park made. Because pretty much every day, what I want to do is get exercise and ride my bike. And I have a lot of fun doing that. And we're not allowed to do it at the skate park, so you kind of just make us sit around and do nothing because maybe skateboarding isn't the best choice for us because maybe we fall way too easily and we have weak bones or something like that. I don't know. But maybe it's just not a sport that we're good at, and we would like to do a different one that we are good at. That's all, pretty much.
And there is a group of citizens trying to put together the funds and the location for a BMX park. So we haven't forgotten you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Earlier, we had Ruth Miller ask to, that her time be given to Sandy Rylander. What does the council think of that? That would be six minutes, that would be six minutes that we would be saying yes or no.
Three minutes. You can't do that.
I need 20.
No, it's not. We have had this issue come up.
I'll hold the six minutes if she wants it.
Okay. I think it's a very bad precedent. They've never done this.
Okay, that's why I asked the council members. So, Sunday, come on up. And if you can keep it to three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Because like I said, this is not an agendized item. And we need to have a conversation when we set up the special meeting. Thanks.
That's good. And I think that you're allowed to do that, if I remember correctly. Anyway, I always get super nervous, so I wrote it all down, and it might not be, I might be squeezed 20 minutes into three if I can. I'm here tonight out of frustration from your last council meeting when you were talking about lights, and then it turned into an issue with the skate park. And technically, and honestly, and the truth is, the only issue with the skate park is Carol Smith's perception of the skate park. There is an issue there. We need support. Sorry, I'm getting all nervous. Anyway, I'm an Ojai resident of 16 years. I'm a member of Skate Ojai. I'm an Ojai Day volunteer. I organize all the skate contests. I'm a skate park committee member since the beginning. I am a part of the Ventura Park and Rec Skate Park Ad-Hoc Committee Member. And I'm serving my third year as Vice Chair, I'm totally nervous, on the Ojai Parks and Rec Commission. And I'm speaking tonight for myself, not as a Commissioner. I just wanted to come here and share our love with skateboarding. Everyone here, you know, works and has kids, and we're here tonight because we're super frustrated with the comments and the way the meeting was twisted and turned, and an issue all of a sudden is happening at the skate park. And it's not, and we don't need supervision. You kind of, it's, we're all here to speak, and it's a waste of our time, honestly, because we've done this over and over. We just need support to get the scooters and bikes out. These kids need a bike park, and we need a scooter park. And we need anything else that the kids need to do around here. And we don't have, we shouldn't have to like, fight for it. Anyway, sorry, I'm getting all nervous. Anyway, we've all spent a lot of our time, and the skate park is an absolute success. It's been that way since day one. And when Sergeant Arthur was here, and he worked with us, the entire time, he would tell us that. And he came to all the meetings, and he had a great understanding of anything going on in the skate park. He knew the kids, he knew how to handle the situation. He was starting to give tickets for scooters. And the Ojai Park and Recreation Commission had a meeting, we discussed it, that scooters and bikes were not an option, it was never fundraised, designed, or built for that purpose. So we need the police support in getting the scooters and bikes out, not just helmet tickets, because it really feels like the skaters are getting picked on. And there's three rules on there, and I brought you a photo of those, because Sergeant Arthur had us, he had us narrow it down to the three most important things that the police department could focus on, and they're right there in the front on the sign when you walk in. And it's no scooters and bikes in the park. He purposely said "in the park," so it'd help you move the kids out, and it's super clear. And it's a helmet, and it also cites the citation code and how much it costs. Because originally, it said 30 bucks, and it's not 30 bucks, it's 275. Okay, what else? I've got stuff to say. So I also manage the Ojai Skate Park website, and I think that having a skate park here is, brings people to the community from all over. And we do want people from Fillmore and Santa Paula and Ventura to come here. And if they're 21, they should go to OBC and have fun and everything else that anyone else can do. You know, they come to the tennis tournament, they can go to Azu and have a drink and park in the park and ride. This is, Ojai is open to everybody. And anyway, we get, for a skate park website that I haven't touched since October, we had 28 hits.
Sunday, when you move away from the desk.
We got 28 hits by noon today of people looking at the skate park website. I haven't done anything since October. It's like totally boring, but it's factual. You can see where it's at, you can Google Map how to get here. And we had 92 on our busiest days. We get over 600 hits. That's 600 people that don't live here, that are checking out the Ojai Skate Park. So I think you should be a little more open to welcoming other people, other communities. What else? I also have my phone number on the skate park website. I get phone calls all the time. People from Hawaii, Montana, I've had parents from Westlake coming, their son's doing something that, one son is in a sport at Nordoff, and the other kid wants to skate, so they're going to have him skate. So, you know, it's completely a success. We have kids and adults coming from all over. There is no issue at the skate park. Sergeant Arthur specifically asked us to call the police department to get the scooters and bikes out. 20 of those 100 calls are mine. Okay? So I was calling, kids were calling me to call. Because it's weird, they're all friends, they all hang out, they totally know each other. They don't want to narc on their friend. They just want help. It's not for scooters and bikes. It's totally dangerous for the skaters. And you know what? And it's dangerous for the little scooter guys. They'll be like, three-years-old scooting around, and you have adults skating. It's not safe. So we just need help getting them out and getting them a place to have their own sport. I also brought you some pictures. Because look, there's a lot of good stuff happening over there.
When you step away, you can't be.
Anyway, I just want you to see, there's a lot of good things happening at the skate park. It's not this, you know, place that someone says it is. And we have a lot of history there. Skate park's been, you know, around for four years. And honestly, since the shift in the tone towards, you know, skateboarding and the scooter thing, when Sergeant Arthur left, everything kind of changed. We need it to be a priority, we need the police to come out and, and help us. Let's see, what else did I have on here? Sorry. And then I just want to talk about a couple of facts. That it is considered a hazardous sport, releases liability to the city. Once you provide supervision, that's gone. You're liable. So it's unnecessary. That includes wearing a helmet. If you choose not to wear a helmet, you've, you know, you take the risk of getting a ticket or getting hurt. You know, it's, but you're, the city is not liable for that. That is not something I think the police department need to spend time checking. They're not going to Libby, you know, they're not going to Sarozody watching the baseball game or the football game or anything like that. I feel like we're being sort of, not, I don't know what the word is. Targeted. Thank you. And I also think it's a complete waste of taxpayers' money to hire additional staff to supervise the skate park. It's unnecessary. It would limit everyone's time to skate. We have morning skaters, we have evening skaters, we have people that look at the website, and they're just traveling and they're coming here to skate. They're not, you know, checking in and letting us know when they're coming. It's a recreational facility. It should be open and treated like every other one. Let's see. And I just, talking about the scooters and bikes, we had met as a commission. Previously, we completely opened up to public, we talked about it and decided that it wasn't, you know, we're not going to open it up to scooters and bikes, just like we knew from the beginning. But we did have that discussion. And I think there's a couple of solutions that we can do, and that would be, I've asked Park and Rec to create a flyer that we could help pass out to educate the parents and kids showing up. Because so many kids know that you can scooter there now because no one's doing anything, that it would be great to start passing that out. And I know a lot of parent volunteers that would do that. And it's non-confrontational, and you don't make the kids do that. We would parole the park, get to know the kids that are in there, help us remove the scooters and bikes. Because if you go in and give a helmet ticket, but you leave three scooter kids in there, that's totally not fair.
Sunday, I'm going to ask you to finish up. I'm not sure how long you've been speaking.
I'm almost done, sorry.
But, but I want to, I want to comment again. This is unscheduled item. So it's not really fair to the other people in the community who would, if they knew it was going to be discussed, be here also.
And that's how I felt last time. Exactly, that's why I'm here.
And it also isn't fair for the council members, because I've almost put a gag order on them to not get into dialogue. It's unscheduled, so I'd like for you to finish up. And I expect you to be at the special meeting, which may need to be held at the gym.
Yeah.
So that we can listen to everything and discuss it. So go ahead and finish up.
And that's part of my point. We don't need a special meeting. We just need help getting bikes and scooters out there. Isn't a problem at the skate park, other than enforcing the rules, all of them. So you don't need, I feel like this huge thing opened up, and it's not necessary.
Okay, finish up, because I'm, I've got this urge again to get into dialogue.
Okay, I'm finishing up. New signage at the skateboard park, which we're working on, that states that it's just for skateboarding. Skate lessons, we talked about offering skate lessons for free. We would be willing to do that and bring skates to, you know, get the other, all the kids involved. And also supporting the BMX park, and then also creating a scooter park at Sarozody, maybe, on the pad. And I just want to end with, there's nothing wrong with the skate park. We just need to find a solution for the other sports, so that's it.
Thank you. And, and I have a comment. Since I get to be mayor, I am not, I will not again allow one speaker to combine their time with another speaker. Three minutes, say what you'd like to say, and we'll move on. But this doesn't work for me, especially on an agendized item. That's all the speaker cards I have for public comment or items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to follow up on the hydrant issue, just a little more clarity. I brought with me Battalion Commander Kevin Davis in the back. He's the one that'll be supervising the, and working with the fire prevention on the hydrants. And just a note that when we do flow those hydrants in a drought, the public will be sensitive to the fact that we are flowing a lot of water down the street, because it is a lot of water when we do that. So when we do those 14 hydrants, starting on July 7th, you might get some calls on that. But it, you know, if you add up the amount of time that we haven't flowed any water, we've actually put a lot of water in the bank by, you know, not doing that. The other thing I'd like to say is that we have, Chief Davis has been on three local structure fires here as of late in the valley, and understands the importance of the issue. And also that we will be flow testing all 350 hydrants, as far as we're just going to, Chief Davis has been directed with Engine 21 and Engine 22 to actually go to each hydrant in the city, make sure we open it up for a period of 10 seconds, just to validate the fact that there is water in those hydrants. Not just static water, but there's enough that, that the valve is not shut, so that the public has rest assured that at least there is some water in all those hydrants, all 350 within the city.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to, oh, come on up. State your name for the record.
Chet Hilgers. Good to see you again after two weeks away. I just have one thing quickly to say. I had a few things, but a lot of them were answered already. One of, one of them is, just as you're thinking about all of this, and you're thinking about the police department looking out for the little kid at any park, right? And the chief said he doesn't have time or he doesn't have money to look out for the kids at the skate park. He doesn't want to babysit them. Let me just, let me just say, he's always saying to us, he's got two cars dedicated to the city, that the city pays for. Can I tell you what the number is per year for that, for two police cars? Everybody think of a number. You at home, think of a number.
Three hundred fifty.
$3,145,000 a year for two police cars. I think we can do better.
Are there any other hands out in the audience that I've missed, that have not spoken, that would like to speak on unscheduled items? Please give your name.
Hi, I'm Dale Feranti. I just want to share my observation within a two-week window at the park. And I just noticed that there were some inconsistencies as far as enforcing the rules. And hey, I'm all about following the rules. I wear a helmet. But, so one particular weekend, I had my son there with me, he's four. And it's dangerous to have him out practicing with people on big bikes and things like that. And a couple officers came on bikes, and so I asked them, you know, if they could maybe talk to some of the people on scooters and bikes, because I was trying to have some fun with my son, and it was difficult to do. So they, you know, talked to them, and they had all the scooters and bikes leave. And so that was fine. But then the following weekend, a different officer came to visit the park, and it was a very different situation, which was kind of surprising. So it just seems, you know, whatever the decision is, whether it's okay to have scooters or not, or what, you know, whatever, whatever you decide, just make it the same across the board. Because the following weekend, a different officer came, and immediately, all the people that were skating without a helmet stopped skating. And the scooters and the bikes just kept doing their thing, and the officer didn't do a thing. So I decided to ask him, well, are you enforcing the rules today? Or, you know, just politely asking him. And he says, "No, I just want to make sure the kids are left alone." And I said, "Oh, okay, well, then is it okay for these people over here? It doesn't seem fair for, this is a skate park, so these guys are sitting on a curb because they don't have a helmet, and these guys are riding a scooter. And if that's okay, is it okay if they skate?" And he says, "I don't care what they do." So I politely let the people know that we're sitting on the curb, that, "Hey, he doesn't mind if you skate, let's go skate." Because it's no fun skating by yourself, you know, all the time, so. So he, it was a very different situation. I just wanted to share that observation. So he was fine with the people skating with no helmet, and he was fine with the scooters, and he was fine with the bikes. Just leave the little kids alone, was his message. And so it was a very different message from just one week ago. Granted, the officers were, were different officers, you know? So I just think, you know, whatever, there are rules in black and white. So if you're going to enforce them, enforce them all, and don't, you know, be wishy-washy and all over the map.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Let us have your name.
Harley. The destruction of the skate park, the most destruction I've ever seen is personally my arm. I've never seen anybody destroy anything in the skate park. We have plastic on most everything, pegs, pedals, bar ends, rubber tires. The most damage is probably the scooters grinding down the ledges because they're so low to the ground. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Give us your name.
Hello, my name's Shane Allen. I go to the skate park quite a bit. I also maintain the skate park. I fix the tiles, I fix the concrete, I fill in the cracks. I'm there picking up the trash from all the kids. I've got a son of my own. He goes to the skate park. It's really dangerous with all the things, not, not to mention the disrespect from the kids, the trash, the intentional vandalism, and none of their parents are there. When I had a chance, I'd speak with their parents, and a lot of times- there. When I had a chance, I speak with their parents, and a lot of times, I get hostile parents. And I just ask them to please read the rules. I'm there trying to fix the place two weekends ago, and I'm, I'm asking the police officers who show up, and they're basically grabbing and throwing a 13-year-old kid on the ground. This kid was not dangerous. This kid was whatever. He's a kid. And obviously, I didn't know they were in the middle of it, you know, going after this 13-year-old kid. And I asked them, you know, I was in the middle of fixing the tiles in the pool, and they instantly turned their attention to coming after me. And, you know, I'm just trying to fix the place. We don't have a lot of help fixing it, which I wouldn't expect that. We raised the money. Someone needs to take a stand and be responsible and fix it when it needs to be fixed. So basically, we have problems, and the issues where the tiles are being broken, I'm coming in and fixing everything. It is from the bicycles. It is from the scooters. And the kids, it wouldn't cost much to bring a backhoe and a loader in, and give the kids a nice dirt course to ride their bikes on. That would be an easy solution. So I would just say that. Maybe it could be brought into perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next, is there anyone else that wishes to speak, that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? I don't see anyone.
It's on a different subject. I just thought I read in the LA Times, I thought it was a very interesting article. I was lucky enough to know this guy. I admired my dad so much, and Wendy's dad, so much for being real quality people, and do what they say they're going to do. And a good friend of mine died. There was an article in the paper. His name was Miro Slavak. I think it was really his sudden example for people in the country. He was the youngest pilot for Czechoslovakian Airlines, and he commandeered a DC-3 with all his friends, and he threw out to West Germany at about a couple hundred feet in darkness, and was repatriated in Germany. And he was just a great citizen, and a, really a beacon for people of what this country stands for. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any hands, so if I, if I've missed you, just stand up. I don't see anyone. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Roll call. Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. The next item is a public hearing. Continued public hearing on the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2014, 2015. And before we, before we move on, I'm going to clear the lobby.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As we indicated last week, we are working on a revision of the fee schedule. We're not ready to present that yet, and so we're recommending that you receive any input that citizens may have on the fee schedule, and then continue this matter to the next meeting, which is the July 22nd meeting.
Any questions from council? I have one speaker card. William Wierich.
I have one very short comment, kind of comes from my background, when I was running a business affairs division of university, and this kind of thing came up. And it struck me in the cost of services analysis on the first page, that the cost of providing the service is done purely internally, done by interviewing the employees who are involved in each service, and determining how much time they depend on average providing each type of service. Absolutely essential, absolutely important, and not any implied criticism, but I think part of the standard procedure, to see if somebody collects data from all the cities that do this, as to what the average time is across cities, to kind of calibrate whether or not procedures are proper within the city. Again, it's not a matter of how people are working, but, you know, does this, do the internal reporting, does it align with the external data collection? Maybe the League of Cities collects data like this. I'm just thinking, there probably is an external database, which generates as additional information for this calculation, the average for certain standard services that could be compared to the internal reporting. I just think that would be a contribution to the discussion, if such a database exists. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker card I have for this item. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? No. I'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I move to continue this matter till July 22nd.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item on our agenda is also a public hearing regarding city commissions. Mr. Clark?
And City Clerk Bezor will make this report.
Good evening, Mayor. Strobel, Mayor Pro temp Smith, and council members. Currently members of the Art Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and Parks and Rec serve a term of two years. By serving four years, commissioners will have an opportunity to learn institutional history, which will help ensure commissioners are experienced in how to formulate policies to advise the city council, and further be consistent with the Planning Commission and Building Appeals Board. Staff is recommending that terms of the members for each respective commission shall expire at the second regular city council meeting of May. The terms shall be staggered, and we will correct those terms if this gets approved this evening. Members of the Planning Commission expire, they serve for four years, and they expire in December. Staff is recommending to change this, that they end in May, so all commissions are consistent, and the interview process would be the same for everything. So with that, I'm asking for the ordinance changes to be approved this evening, to change the terms to four years for all commissions, and to change the Planning Commission from expiring in December to May.
Okay, so this would be an introduction in first reading for the ordinance?
Correct.
Any questions, comments from council? Mayor Pro temp Smith?
I think this is a common sense thing to do. We, the two years is just not a sufficient term. I think the first year is spent sort of learning your way around. The second year, you sort of get your feet. And then suddenly, we might have to re-interview to have them on again. I think four years for, makes common sense, and I'm all for it.
Any other comments? I do not have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on the term of the city commissions?
One other note I'd like to make is all commissions have been notified of this. And the only response I did receive was from the Arts Commission, which they were recommending three years, but we would like to be consistent across the board.
Did I ask if anyone in the audience wished to speak?
Yes.
Okay, back to council. Oh, I suppose at some point, I should have opened the public hearing, right?
And then closed it.
And then I probably should have closed it. So we, we've done that. Any comments? Any motions?
I'm ready to introduce an ordinance to the City of Ojai, amending sections 2-4.103 4-8.03 4-16.102, and 10-1.01 for the Ojai Municipal Code related to terms for the Park and Recreation Commission, the Arts Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Planning Commission. And ask City Clerk to read the title of the ordinance, and approve a motion to wait for the readings of the ordinance, and pass it to the second reading.
Second. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City of Ojai, amending sections 2-4.103, 4-8.03, 4-16.102, and 10-1.01 of the Ojai Municipal Code related to terms for the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Arts Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission, and changing when terms expire for the Planning Commission. Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion. And before I turn it over to Mr. Clark, I wanted to beg forgiveness from our Finance Director, Susie Mears. I remembered to comment on everyone at the last meeting, except Susie Mears, who puts a tremendous amount of time, energy, expertise. She takes the time to discuss and go over the budget with every department, with Mr. Clark. And, you know, she was, she's such an obvious person, with so much, that's so valuable to the city, that I just passed right over her. So I apologize for that. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, first of all, I'd like to echo your comments. Susie really has done a great job helping put together this budget, and it's much appreciated. So we've had quite a bit of time spent reviewing the budget, receiving public input and so forth. And so now it's being presented for adoption. There were several modifications that we discussed during the course of the studies, and those are summarized in your staff report and incorporated into the budget resolution. Really, the only item that is not completely resolved at this point in time is that we had a request from the Green Coalition for funding, and I'm still meeting with them and requesting additional information, and we'll bring that back as a separate item at the next council meeting. And so with that, we do recommend that you adopt the budget as modified. And then, secondly, we had a closed session to discuss compensation of unrepresented employees, and there's a recommendation for a resolution providing a 2% increase to those employees.
Any questions from council?
I do have a question for staff. Regarding the fee schedule, do you anticipate any impact on the revenues with, if we decide to reduce or increase any of the fees?
I think there's a possibility that we'll have some increased revenue, because what we're seeing so far is, in many cases, the fees do not fully recover the cost. So I think it's unlikely that you'll be short revenues at this point.
Any other questions from council, comments? Okay, I do have speaker cards for this item. William Wierich?
On the subject?
Yes, it says five. Oh, no, no, you're not wrong. I'm wrong. We're on item four. I'm ahead of myself. We have no speaker cards for, for the budget. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment regarding the budget?
I did have a question, actually. The growth in TOT, I presume that's, since we do not have any new hotels, or online, or we have pretty much 100% occupancy on weekends, this prediction is based on just the inflationary rate, or what? I'm looking at page 43 on Capital Improvement Fund, which says the TOT part of, you know, their, but their capital improvement would go from 479,000, 479,000 roughly, to 752. So what are your assumptions there, 18, 19?
So the overwhelmingly significant factor in the TOT is the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. And so we do meet with them and talk to them about what their reservations are looking like. And so their booking pace, if you will, is greater in 2014 than it was in 2013. And this is based on a conservative estimate, below what they are projecting themselves for themselves.
And so it does not include what their room rate would be in the years 18 and 19?
Oh, yes, it does.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. But it does not necessarily include a more hotel rooms becoming available, i.e. our, no, okay, thank you.
Any other comments? And I think I asked if there were comments from the audience. I didn't see any. We'll entertain a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to adopt a resolution adopting the final revised fiscal year 2013, 14 budget, and the proposed fiscal year 2014, 15 budget. And I'm going to do these two separately. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. I move to adopt a resolution setting salaries and terms and conditions of employment.
Second.
Roll call. Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith, Lara?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to, the next item is transient rentals in residential zones. And this is the one that I had speaker cards on. And we'll come back to them. Mr.
Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As you recall, when we had our goal-setting session several months back, one of the high priority items that you asked that we discuss is transient rentals in residential zones. This item has been discussed off and on periodically. And at this point in time, the status of our code is such that an individual property owner could come forward and seek a conditional use permit to rent property transiently in a residential zone. However, none have. We have done a survey of Airbnb, VRBO, and Craigslist to see if we can get a feel for how many active transient rentals there are in the community. And we provided, provided the results of that as an attachment to this report. And we found there were 36 that it seems pretty likely are in the city limits of the City of Ojai. Your past discussion was that we were not to pursue abatement of these transient rentals pending further discussion and, and decision-making on, and policymaking on how they're to be handled. And so I think at this point in time, the reason for bringing this forward is to decide to what extent we want to allow transient rentals in residential zones, and to what extent we want to abate transient rentals that have not been properly permitted through the city process, or whatever future city process that we come up with. We do anticipate that there are a variety of issues that need to be addressed as we're going through this. And so we're sort of looking at a multi-step process. First of all, the City Council weighing in on the general parameters that you'd like to see developed for this. And that could either be at this meeting, or at this and additional meetings, if you feel it's necessary. And then referring those issues to the Staff and Planning Commission to fill out the details, and to develop a revised transient rental ordinance. And then that recommended ordinance would come back to the City Council for future review at a subsequent meeting. Some of the key issues that have come up have been protecting neighborhood integrity, number one. So far, the transient rentals have not generated a lot of complaints from neighborhoods. But certainly, if your neighborhood was to turn into predominantly transient rental neighborhood, and you lost that sense of community, that would be of concern to you. So that's a concern. Overconcentration is a very similar concern. Another concern is protecting the stock of available workforce housing. You don't want to have so many transient rentals that they squeeze out housing for workforce and other people that's affordable for them to rent. Another question is means and methods of addressing nuisance complaints. There are a number of examples of how this has been done in other communities. It seems that it's fairly self-policing if the procedures that are in other resort communities that have a lot of transient rentals are used. And then another issue is how to regulate event houses. Event houses kind of go beyond just transient rental, and may have wedding receptions, conferences, or other activities that are even bigger than a transient rental. And of course, those are not permitted in residential zones, as our zoning is, is currently written, although we have identified two currently active event houses. So in looking at how So in looking at how the transient rentals are regulated, there's a couple of questions. One is whether or not you want them at all. Some cities prohibit them in residential zones, and that's the end of the story. If you do want to allow them, how do you restrict the number? Or do you keep it completely open? So you might have a limited number of transient rentals in the community. You may require a certain amount of separation between transient rentals so they don't become over-concentrated in one place. There's a variety of ways cities have tried to allow them, but not let them become overwhelming. Another question is, do you want to have an administrative process for permitting those that are allowed? Or whether you want to have a discretionary process? The problem with a discretionary process, we found, and we've found that cities are moving away from a discretionary process. A discretionary process is a process where you'd have a public hearing before the Planning Commission to make a decision on whether or not to allow it. And the good part of it is that it does get neighborhood input like any other planning matter. The bad part about it is it's very high risk. It's very expensive, and it's very time-consuming. And so people who are renting property tend to evade it and not follow it. With the administrative processes that we've seen in some of the other resort communities, they are not seeing the level of complaints that some people worry about, about nuisances and party houses and things like that. So we are recommending as staff that you consider an administrative process to the extent that you allow transient rentals. So I think that's sort of an overview. I'd be glad to answer any questions. We provided quite a bit of material for you to look at, but I think there's also quite a bit to think about, and I'm sure people who'd like to address you on it.
Any questions for staff from council?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. When you said you have some complaints, do you know exactly how many complaints you've had over these rental units?
I don't know, but it's been very few. The other thing I don't know is the fact that we're not abating them may impact whether people make a complaint or not.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I do have speaker cards. William Warwick?
Thank you very much, Warwick, 607 North Blanch. I saw this on the agenda, started digging into all of the excellent compilation of material that Mr. Clark put together, and started talking with other people about it. Because I'm in an area impacted, obviously, where I live by this kind of issue. And the more I, it's one of those issues, I sympathize with you. The more I thought about it, the more I see it's going to be a difficult one to grasp and deal with, but you have to. Because I think right now, we have the worst of all worlds. We have people making investments on the basis of, and structuring their residential properties on the basis of this being allowed. It's been going on for years without enforcement or effective means of enforcement. And so by definition, in those situations, the problem gets worse and worse in terms of trying to correct it to any kind of a policy. So it's high time, and I appreciate the challenge you all are accepting on this. I have a couple of questions to help me think through this. Number one is, do we have data on the demand gap for things like when the Ojai Music Festival happens? In terms of the gap between what can be, what is provided by the Valley Lodging Hotel Motels and the gap that's met by lodging and homes that would otherwise make it difficult for the festival to function? Do we have assumptions built into the Libby Bowl, for example, for major events that basically implicitly depend upon more supply than we have in the hotels and motels? I don't know if that data exists, but that's certainly a question that I ran into in terms of talking with people. Do we depend on this, you know, as part of our tourist economy? In other words, is the peak loads, are they being provided now by this kind of supply? And second of all, for capital investment that's already been made, I run into the issue of, are there, and this is a question for Mr. Fletcher, are there uses for residential property that state law provides that trump any attempt at local control? For example, group homes and rehab clinics? I know this has been a big issue in Malibu. And I just think it's something, you don't want an unintended consequence of trying to ban something, and then you end up, somebody going around and saying, "Well, I'm just going to put this in here because I built all this now." And, you know, I've read some of the newspaper articles in Malibu over the last five to 10 years on this. It's been a big issue down there. What can you and can you not regulate? And so I just wanted to conclude with, I think that, I think it's, there's so much more to say about this, 20 more seconds, can't get, make justice on it. But I think we have to start with a permit or a license, because there's no way to enforce without it. And I would, again, a legal question in my mind. Can the city pass an ordinance that says that you, if you're going to have a vacation rental, however regulated, you've got to display that permit or license number at the house, including a responsible party, and in any advertising, and hold the advertising, the websites or whatever, responsible. If they advertise without that permit or license, they're subject to being warned or fined if they don't provide that. That would be an enforcement mechanism. Thoughts? Time's up. Thank you.
Janet Cole?
Janet Cole, 706 Canyada Street. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this item as I feel it greatly impacts the residential neighborhood integrity. I live in a neighborhood severely affected by this problem. We have two unpermitted event houses, one vacation rental house and a motel, all within a football field's distance from our home. This was not the case when we bought our house 31 years ago in this R1-zoned neighborhood. I've read with interest this entire packet. And while we're not a Palm Springs or Carmel, it's interesting to see the conditions and stipulations as pertains to a number of things, including minimum night stays, number of documents, and trash. As a matter of fact, the vacation house across the street from me put out the wrong trash can yesterday, so there's an overfull green waste can out on the curb, and it'll probably be there until next Monday. I fully support the recommendation for the Planning Commission to conduct public hearings and hope they'll consider both options, conditional use permits as well as the administrative process for permitting. We're not looking to place gratuitous hoops for these owners to have to jump through. We just feel there should be reasonable regulation with adequate oversight and enforcement. This is not the situation as it exists today. Thank you.
Craig Beam?
Thank you, Mayor, as Strobel, members of the City Council. Several of us live in the same neighborhood. As you know, I live on Blanch and West Oak Street. But let me offer my perspective from the standpoint of enforcing regulations as the city attorney involving group homes and what have you. Things that, operations of this type tend to be in an anathema to single-family zones. One. Two, it's very unclear, based on Mr. Clark's statement, what he means by, quote, residential zones. Rather, the zones in which there are residential dwellings, single-family residential dwellings. But I'd offer maybe a half dozen considerations, none of which are discussed in your staff report, which seems to assume that we have to do something about this, permitting it administratively or otherwise. There is follows. Let me rest my tired old eyes and read these to you. Number one, by their nature, such rental, rentals have no management. They're available for transient, you know, people only. They have no relationship to the neighbors. Unlike a regular residential zone, if you have a problem with the neighbors, you walk next door, you call your neighbor, what have you. That's the hallmark of Ojai. We know our neighbors. We go back and forth. We visit up and down Blanch and what have you. Three, the renters have no way of even knowing the neighbors or having any interaction with them whatsoever. They're renters, temporary renters. They're transient renters. There is therefore little or no control of these occupancies or the activities that take place. If there are problems, they inevitably become police problems because the neighbors call the police. Who else are they going to call? The owners? The owners are out of town or don't care. They're not going to respond to that. The police, in my experience as the city attorney who enforced zoning codes, are ill-equipped to deal with this situation absent a clear violation of the state penal code. What are you going to do? I mean, it's a difficult situation for the police. And again, I've represented a police department and have dealt with some of these problems. The council has identified the need to preserve existing neighborhoods. I ask you what effect this is going to have on the integrity of our neighborhoods. We have the joy of having residential neighborhoods that are literally walking distance from downtown. They give vitality to this village in the times we have no tourists walking the streets. I mean, those of you know me know how many times I walk the length of the village a week. Probably six, eight, 10 times. It's my normal route. We call it the, quote, the village route. You know, the short route for our dogs. So I think you need to really look at your own staff report and question the assumptions that seem to be made. Avoid overcrowding of transient rentals. In people speak, that means allow them, but we don't want too many. I question that assumption of residential zones to begin with. Or consider, and you've already opened the door by deciding you're not going to take any action to abatement. Those, rather than be considering, you know, you're just going to look and see, those really become, I think to many, an invitation to go down this path, which will inevitably make your situation in the City Council worse, not better. This is a very, very slippery slope. I live in a quiet neighborhood. We have a number of children with development disabilities that walk down the middle of the street because we have no sidewalks for the park on the other side of the Christian Science Church and what have you. I don't think you want this. We have group neighborhoods, not only in Canyada, but also in Blanch. Okay? I haven't said anything about it, but frankly, there have been more times than not that I've considered calling the police. But having represented a police department, I know the limitations of what the police can do. But I guarantee you, the owners are nowhere to be found in those situations. That's the reality that Ojai is facing right now. Do not go down a path that's going to, de facto, encourage the behavior. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Fletcher. Let's say somebody who's in an R1 zone, they're paying insurance as though their house is their, you know, a single dwelling. And in fact, they are renting out on Airbnb two, you know, two rooms of their house, and they rent it out. And there is a fire at that house. And their insurance company, who assumed they were renting for a regular single dwelling, finds out that the owner has been doing this. What can the insurance company do to the owner? Are they, do they have to rebuild a house when they found out the use was different? And what, what would happen to the owner who's doing this?
I don't know. It's a function of what's permitted under the policy. Whether the policy, one of the underlying assumptions with the concept of the vacation rental is that it's a periodic, or not a fundamental change in land use, but it's that, it's a property that occasionally is rented out for vacation purposes as opposed to being turned into a permanent rental of transient housing. Now, in fact, there are many cases we're finding out. There's these stories all over the state, around the country, finding out that people are, in fact, just making them full-time. Not to like Airbnb is supposed to be really just rooms rented, but people are renting almost the entire unit, or rooms, or rooms in a property. So that's really a function of the property owner, of what they must disclose to their insurance company. And my experience with insurance coverage is that the insurance company must establish that there's a fundamental difference in the risk of whether that room is being rented out or whether it's a room that somebody lives in. So I, it's an issue of insurance law. I really can't answer.
Thank you. Jim Churchill?
Good evening. My name is Jim Churchill. I live at 310 McKee Street. We have three vacation rentals very close to us. One right next to us and one within a very short block and one around the corner. And it's not what we bargained for when we bought our house. So I guess I want to, I want to, I just want to go on record as seconding the kind of concerns that you're hearing here. And we will be, I guess, watching and hoping to participate in whatever kind of discussions go forward. I hope there's going to be more opportunity for discussion than that of testifying before the council. Thank you.
Reggie Wood?
Thank you. I live at 144 North Pueblo, and I'm a design-build contractor. And I spent a few years designing and building guest houses here in Ojai. And I've had the opportunity to work with families. And what I wanted to speak about was when you try to do like the amnesty program with the guest houses and legitimize or regulate certain things, this aspect of the vacation rentals are transient, it's actually being driven by what's called ecotourism. And that's where people want to experience the private, you know, as people are living in the communities, their homes. They want to go to a place where there's a garden, a vegetable garden, where they're talking to actual people that live there. They can tell them where to go and what to do, unlike a motel. So it's a separate and a different thing, and it's just a beginning thing. And I think it's very good for Ojai, for the economy, and for the, just for the nature of it. And as far as inconveniences to neighbors and private properties, they are private properties, and sometimes people, your neighbors will turn the music up loud or their dogs will bark. It's not much different. These are just other people from other communities coming to stay and experience Ojai on the basis of living in someone's home. And if you imply codes and regulations, like they did the guest houses the day after where they doubled the sanitation fees and just about wiped out the guest house business, now you have another fledgling industry here. You know, and if you start going, have you ever tried to get a CUP, a conditional use permit? And where are these enforcements going to take place? Are they going to be on what level? Like you would have codes for the Ojai Valley Inn on somebody's house? I think this is a quiet thing. This is just people, you know, and ecotourism. And it's, I think it's a good thing, and I think this council and this community should encourage it as, and maybe I can build a few more guest houses here and there.
That's all the speaker cards I have for this item. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to? Give us your name.
Hi, my name is Lisa Brennis. I also live at 310 McKee Street. And I just, I want to comment that Ojai has a long tradition. And I think it's basically sound of being very thoughtful about how you do permitting here. This is a small town, and you have very well-discussed and thought-out zoning regulations here that people who live here, by and large, abide by. And so I would just like to urge you, when you consider this, not to consider it as something outside the zoning process. That's the bedrock that use is determined in this town. So if you're going to do something, you know, zone it. Do it for real. Don't just, you know, wink. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I think that this is a three or four-part discussion. And I think that in order to adequately discuss it, we need to take it one step at a time and make a decision in one respect before we move on to discussing the next aspect of what we have before us. The first thing is that the council has to decide whether we want to have transient occupancy rentals in our community at all, whether that be in the residential zones or anywhere in the community. If the answer to that's no, we don't have to go any further. If the answer to it's yes, then we can decide, well, do we want it in residential zones or not? Then we can move on to see whether or not we want to put regulations against them and how we're going to collect TOT and things like that. But the fundamental question is, do we want to have the transient rentals in our community? And I think that's what we have to, as a group, decide first. And if we decide, yes, we do want to, then do we want to send it to the Planning Commission for them to begin to have public hearings about it and be able to promulgate some regulations with it? with it? But if we, as a group, decide, no, we don't want them, then we ought to put an end to it and have no further discussions about it and discuss how we're going to enforce those that are in violation.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember?
Councilwoman Blatt, do you want them?
Yes.
Maybe we need a straw poll. Because that's a good point.
Well, and, and I agree with you with the straw poll. I tell you, I don't know.
Okay.
I can see advantages both ways. I'm, I'm not usually a fence sitter, but I am this time.
And Councilwoman Laura?
Councilwoman Clapp, I am in the same position. I'm not quite, I don't know. I, I see advantages and disadvantages to both things. My whole issue with this is, is I don't know, I don't have the right information in front of me to really know. I feel like we still need to figure out how many are actually, or, or if, if there are, if we do not allow transit housing, transient housing, how are they still allowed to go on? And if they're hard to regulate or abate, if we decide not to have them, is it going to be beneficial because we don't, we don't have enough staff to abate them? I mean, I, that's kind of my questions towards not knowing exactly whether it'd be good for Ojai or not, is not knowing that. And then also, obviously, hearing from our public, I heard that there's a lot of concern with the integrity of the neighborhoods, which I think Ojai does have. But I, I also see that there's a trend coming of ecotourism. But do we want that in Ojai? And, and then my other question is also, if, if we decide not to have transient homes, it's Mr. Wierke brought up of rehab homes. Do, do these property owners have the opportunity to turn their housing into rehab or sober living, which could cause even more of an issue in this community? So I, those are the type of questions that I would like to have answered before I really know exactly if I'm in favor or if I'm against it, so.
And Councilwoman Smith?
In theory, I'm dead set against it, because I think if you live, if you bought in an R1 zone or an R2 zone, whatever, you're entitled to what you bought, which is that you know who your neighbors are, the same cars are parked there. I'd be outraged if, on either side of me, I saw different cars every night or four, five times a month with suitcases. I'm also, we live on TOT. Maybe the public doesn't know it. That's our business, is transient occupancy tax. So if you have someone who is running a pseudo hotel, they may even be collecting the TOT. And now we're in a position, we can't collect it because it's not legal. You see, that's the whole real issue. If we're not allowing them, they may say, well, I'm putting aside the TOT here. I have it all ready, but you won't take it because we're not legal. So we're really in a bind. And that's why I would favor looking at some sort of program where we do allow a certain amount of them, and we do allow them to come in and present their case and get an occupancy permit if, in fact, their immediate neighbors do not object. They're not, they're, they're not unhappy with what's been going on. After that period is over, how many we decide on which neighbor, neighborhood, anybody who is, who is outside of that norm, I think we try to find them and prosecute to the, to as much as we can. Not only if they're not collecting TOT. What makes us think they're reporting the income to the IRS? And if I remember, Al Capone was arrested for not paying his taxes. So I mean, telling, you know, here they're collecting $30,000 and not reporting it. I think the IRS really would like to know about that. So to me, this is dead wrong, because the only way we make money is TOT. If, in fact, we have room for these, because yes, people might want to rent a house. I was sitting next to somebody up at Thatcher on their parent week. This was a few years ago, and they said, oh, well, we used to stay at the Ojai Valley Inn, but now we just rent a whole house on the east end, which is not in the city. Mr. Pueblo Street, you're not in the city. You know that, right?
Thank you for pointing that out.
No, you didn't know that? Okay, thank you. And, and so they're putting it aside, but this is our bread and butter. So I do feel that people who are running these illegitimate hotels, and they're not paying their fair share, and they don't have the cost that our hotels have. So I would be in favor of having a program where we'd say, okay, let's look at this. Let's bring it to the planning commission. Let's try to get you under a legal umbrella here. Collect the TOT, do things that puts you in fair competition to our legitimate guys. I don't like the idea of having legitimate hotels who do everything right, and they're in competition with this underground. I think that is basically unfair competition. So I think looking at, bringing it to planning, having a CUP, and people present their case, let's go for that. And frankly, after that, we have to, I'd be in favor of hiring a, an officer for compliance and, and code enforcement, and half of his job will be searching down the places that are doing this still illegally. You say we don't have the money for that now? Well, I think we would if we brought in, let's say, 30 of these places throughout the town, and they were legitimate and paying TOT. I want to go after the ones who do not come in under the umbrella to be permitted. And I would like to go after them hard and heavy, right up to unreported income to, to the IRS.
Madam Mayor?
Let me make a couple of comments, and then I'll, I'll come to you.
Okay.
I'm moving closer to no. And the reason for that is, all right, so transient rentals are for 30 days or less?
No.
Yeah, I know. So I'm concerned about our residential areas remaining residential. That's, that's why we, we purchased in those areas, and I think that should be protected. If we decide to go forward with this type of thing, then we get into regulation enforcement. We don't have the staff for that. So I, I hesitate to even pretend to go in that direction because how are we going to back it up?
Councilmember Clapp? I've given this, I've given this a tremendous amount of thought. Even wake up in the middle of the night and write notes on my iPhone, 3:00 in the morning. So council members work a lot, sometimes at 3:00 in the morning. The San Francisco Chronicle had a whole thing, window into hidden impact of San, on San Francisco of Airbnb. And they're talking about, all of the issues we're talking about, the loss of revenue, and particularly the loss of affordable rentals. San Francisco's extremely expensive to live, and it's eliminating so much housing stock that they're really starting to freak out. And it's become a tremendous problem. It's a tremendous problem internationally. There's many cities that are suing Airbnb, I think Seattle, New York City, San Francisco, because these are underground hoteliers operating in R1 neighborhoods, and for all the reasons we've been speaking about, not paying TOT, also the issue of health and safety, business licenses, insurance, et cetera, et cetera. At first, I thought, well, let's have, we're talking about neighborhood planning and how Ojai has these distinct neighborhoods. And at first, I thought, well, maybe we should just have, within those neighborhoods, a certain number we allow, hypothetically. But then I started talking to people, like the Churchills and some other folks in town that have vacation rentals next to them, and the stories they're telling, and how it's degrading their quality of life in an R1 neighborhood. And I asked myself, isn't this kind of a taking? Aren't these people's property values being lowered because of these vacation rentals? Aren't real estate agents going to have to disclose that in a listing, that there's a vacation rental next door? And frankly, if I'm shopping for a house, and there's two houses I'm choosing from, and one has a vacation rental and one doesn't, I'm going for the one without it. I'm here to tell you. Balboa Island, Newport Beach, Carmel, a lot of communities like ours, vacation, you know, what do you call these places? Tourist communities, destinations, have these problems. They're bigger communities, too. We only have three thousand houses, 3,000 houses in this community. And if we start having a third of the housing stock, or a half, or three quarters or more of the, of the second dwelling units rented out on this basis, you're eliminating a tremendous amount of housing stock. You're going to impact enrollment at the high, at the schools. The schools are dependent upon student enrollment to get money, so you're going to have less money. When you have them in R1, you're eroding the neighborhood for neighborhoods getting and people getting to know one another, looking out for your home when you're gone. And let me look at my 3:00 in the morning notes. There's a few other things in here. And it, it's a taking. And, and I, I'm really starting to wonder, Mr. Fletcher, about this taking element, because you go into an R1 with the presumption that you're living in an R1. And if you start having a plethora of vacation rentals, I'm wondering, um, let's see. And I thought it to myself, all of us here on this dais run on, all of us say the same thing. We want to protect the small-town character of this community. And we want to, we all support housing that people can afford to rent. And the amnesty program is based on that, because the amnesty program is a lot about these smaller dwelling units that by design are affordable. We have a commitment on this council to affordable housing. We have a commitment on this council to preserve its small-town character. And I don't know how many have been to Newport Beach. I don't know how many have been to Balboa Island, but ain't no small-town character. It's party town. And there's more and more people in this community. Every weekend is crammed. You can't get down the highways. God bless it. I'm glad that we're getting more TOT. I'm glad we're getting more tourism dollars. But I think every resident in this community deserves a break from the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday we have to put up with. And when you start having vacation rentals, and it becomes a seven-day-awake tourist town, we don't get that peace and quiet that we all like to have. When, believe me, when Monday comes, I heave a sigh of relief. God, we've got our town back. I think we all want a break from tourism. I like to encourage it. I'm glad it helps the businesses. But it's not all about tourism and business. It's also about the people that live in this community, and our love for our community, and our wanting to be a community that knows our neighbors. And I strongly feel that if we start down this slippery path, slippery road or whatever, towards this, that I think that we're going to really, really impact this community in a detrimental way that will never be able to recover, be recovered. There are, there are people that are buying homes purely for vacation rentals. That, when you look into this article, it's, it's a really interesting article. They, they did a survey, and they discovered how many people that were advertising on vacation rentals by owner and Airbnb, et cetera, et cetera. There are full-on businesses that are going into communities and buying these homes purely for vacation rentals. They aren't in town. They could live in Timbuktu, and they're renting it. They don't have any accountability. They have no connection to this town. They could care less about this town. And, and to me, that's not why I live here. I don't live here for a town that erodes its R1, erodes its sense of neighborhood and community and caring for ourselves, and, and being what we are, and we're all so proud of. And I really think that this, I understand why people are doing it. And frankly, one of the reasons that people are doing it is because we have suppressed wages in this nation. People are getting paid. People are living, if minimum wage was what it would be with inflation, would be at $16, over $16 an hour, that would what minimum wage would be if it gone, commensurate with inflation. So everybody's pinched for money. I don't think people in a lot of ways want to be renting out their homes or parts of their homes. But I think because of suppressed wages and the inflation of food costs and living costs and gasoline costs, people are trying to make a buck where they can. And I empathize with that. But I think, in spite of that, it would be a real mistake for us to have vacation rentals allowed in our community. I think it would destroy the community we know and love. My opinion.
Quick question for Councilman, Councilwoman Clapp. Since we know there are quite a few of these, how do you suggest that we enforce our existing ordinance that we don't allow them, so that people are not encouraged and not, not punished for running these? That's my question, is right now, we don't have the enforcement capacity to have an employee who runs these down. Because if you go on the, you know, any of these websites, that's a beautiful home, blah, 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 pick up the keys. They never give you the exact address. I mean, true, there's pictures and all this stuff, and you could kind of figure out where they are. But it takes some work to find them, to find them, and then to find out what they're doing then. And again, how do we have the enforcement to stop what we do?
Well, I guess, I guess a lot of it's enforcement by complaint. And, you know, I think a lot of the questions that we've been asking recently are about enforcement of our regulations, not purely this. And we always say we don't have the money for it. But maybe it's time to have, have an enforcement officer. Because to have regulations and not enforcement is ridiculous. It's a waste of time. And, and we live in a community. We live in a community with small lots. When we choose to live together in tight quarters, we have to have rules and regulations. And if you don't enforce them, it's not a good thing. So maybe we need to find room in our budget to do that.
I couldn't agree more. If we could have an enforcement officer full-time, and he spends a good part of his week tracking down these unpermitted, non-paying TOT residences, I'd be very thrilled with that. And I really, I'm willing to take it, as I said there. You know, I think you're, you're right. They're taking housing out of the stock. They're taking kids out of our neighborhood. And I think for a lot of them, it's, they could make a lot more on their property than if they rented it. So I'm all for enforcement, and I would even make a, a suggestion that, that our city manager comes back to us with a possibility of what it would cost to have a full-time enforcement officer. And how can we work it into our off, into our budget? I would like to hear that. Because the only reason I'm for it is just for that reason, that we bring in some, and we enforce the rules, and then we go after the other ones, so.
Yeah. And one, one last thing I would like to say is that if you want to run a hotel, buy a hotel. You know, it, it's just not fair to people that live in a R1 to have this happening in an, in an R1. It's just not fair. That's all. It's just fundamentally unfair.
Councilmember Blatt?
Madam Mayor, I would like to have a, a motion either by Councilmember Smith or Councilmember Clapp. I don't understand. We've gotten off the track. We either want them or we don't want them. I'm hearing, well, we want them, but it's only because we want the tax. We don't want them, but we have them in town already. I would like a motion by one of the two council members, so that I can vote on something.
Okay. Well, before, before we do a motion, I have a quick question. And, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Let us ask a couple more questions. Are B&Bs and vacation rentals in the same category?
No. B&Bs are, are forms of hotels.
Yeah. So, so it, San Francisco just used B&B in their articles, but...
Oh, that's Airbnb.
Oh.
Billion-dollar corporation, international. Oh, I thought you were saying B&B. Councilmember Laura?
I just would like to ask staff or attorney, if we were to move forward, towards an abatement, strict enforcement on no transit, transit rental, vacation rentals, are, do we, do you think it would be easily, will, will be successful easily, like we won't have to run in through all of these legal troubles? Or do you foresee a long process? Or what's your?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think this too is, the investigative part is obtaining the evidence that we could, if necessary, produce in court to establish the property owner is conducting a transient use, unpermitted in the code. the property owner is conducting a transient use, unpermitted in the code. One of the issues that we may want to also consider is to clarify the code, to identify this as an unpermitted use. You know, our code, ours is, as most city codes are, as only codes are, it's a, it's a permissive code, meaning if it's not, if it's not listed as permitted, then it's prohibited. But we do have a provision, our code allows, A, the community development director to make findings of comparable uses, and then also there's the CUP process that allows the city council, or the planning commission, and the city council, to grant a CUP for unlisted uses. And that's an opportunity, someone would have the opportunity to seek those approvals. They have that opportunity under the code, to seek an approval, make a finding that, that transient, that the vacation rental use is a comparable use or compatible use to the R1 zone, and we may have to go through the process of making that determination first, if someone wants to exhaust those remedies. But in terms of enforcement, we just need to get the evidence. Theoretically, you might have to do some warrants served to get information regarding property ownership and things like that. That's just an investigative issue we do with other code enforcement cases. And then again, in terms of my office, we can choose and enforce administratively with administrative citations, cite somebody for doing so. If they fail to, if they fail to conform, we continue to cite them. We can file criminal charges, or we can file civil action to get a court order to cease the use. It's, it would be actually, I'm thinking about how you go through enforcement here. This is unlike other things like ongoing code violations. This is, this would be a ramped-up, one-time process to identify existing uses and to shut them down, and then more of a ongoing, low-level enforcement in terms of tracking the various websites to find new operators. But I think eventually also, if it became abundantly clear that they're not permitted in the city, eventually you'd see they would be, they would, they would stop. One of the issues you always have is if there's ambiguous, you know, if there's ambiguous question whether it's a permitted use or not, then folks will do it. If it's a clearly prohibited activity, far more folks will simply, will follow the law and not do it. So I think initially it'd be probably a big, fairly high resource demand, but I don't see that ongoing. It would be, you get a contract for those services sometimes, bring in special investigators, retired police officers under contract, who can do such investigations for you. I've done that in the past. Make your cases, resolve those cases, and then you can change it to a more of a low-level, ongoing enforcement process.
Okay. Let's move on.
I do have another question also. So do these, if these owners choose, could they go to a rehab house, or, it was a great question that Mr. Weyrich raised, so I just wonder.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, there isn't, it's a separate land use question from transient rentals, but the issue of group homes and sober living facilities, there are protections, protections under state law for both those uses. And some communities, vacation communities, Newport Beach is one of them, had a tremendous issue with, with the ability to adopt regulations. I'd tell you, you probably can't ban them, but you can regulate them, limit the number of them. Again, that's, they're distinct from, from the vacation rentals in that it's a different land use. It's a permanent, different activity, as opposed to the occasional renting out of your house for vacation purposes. There is state law that comes into play. But, yeah, I think there's a risk, I can't quantify that risk, that someone who bought a property for the purpose of, like the stories in San Francisco, bought the property for the purpose of conducting, you know, a transient use, if they can't do it anymore, would they look for some other commercial use of their residential property? Yeah, I think that risk exists, and we should be prepared to, to address that at the same time.
Councilmember Clapp?
Madam Mayor, you say, address it at the same time, so you think it would be prudent to address the vacation rentals and at the same time address this other issue, so that we take care of the policy that we want to establish for that as well?
I think we would, I think as we're putting together the evidence, we have how many uses we have, how often they're used, I think we should look at the properties to determine whether there's a risk of that. And I think as, I would recommend as part of this, that we include some evaluation of our current regulations for sober living facilities and group homes. There are, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conflict over that, and there's a lot of conflicting state law issues. There's been a lot of litigation. So if you don't have to take them head-on, you're probably better off. And I don't know if there's any issue of group homes or sober living facilities here in Ojai right now.
Well, if we do do a motion and we bring this forward, I think that we should have that be part of the...
All right. Before we do the motion, because I tend to want things kept separate. We're talking about vacation rentals. Let's keep it to vacation rentals. I do have a question about senior or disabled or group homes. And that question is, do we presently have regulations in place that govern or give us the ability to control?
I don't know. Unfortunately, the planning director's not here tonight.
I see those as two separate issues. And so I would like it to come back to us. I would like the issue of group home, whether it's senior or disabled, whatever, to come back to us as a separate issue.
At the same meeting though, because it sounds like what he's suggesting is that it'd be something that'd be taken care of simultaneous, correct?
Well, I don't make the, I don't connect the two, because many of the, many, yeah.
But you want to have that addressed, so that if in the event that we decide not to have vacation rentals, that we have our policy in place for this other matter, correct? Or this other use?
I might recommend that you, and I, you don't even need to direct, I think we should work with staff. We should determine where we stand on, on group home regulation and whether we need any changes in our code. And if so, begin to work on those.
Could we bring it back as two separate issues, two separate matters on the same agenda?
All right. Now, Councilmember Blatz had a question, and that is, before we proceed with a lot of investigation and a lot of staff time, let's have a motion to hear whether or not we, as a council, approve transient rentals in our city, in the city of Ojai. Yes or no?
I'll make a motion. The motion I would make is that the city council address a amnesty program or a CUP program to bring in transient rentals in R1 and R2 zoning, with the understanding that we would hire a full-time enforcement officer to make sure that the non-permitted units are, stay out of, are dealt with by, by the law. Or maybe that's not a clear motion.
Ms. McClure?
Is there a second? If not, we'll try a different motion.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance disallowing transient rentals in the city of Ojai.
Second? And that, I'm not asking for a second. That is a second.
Could I have this discussion?
Sure.
Just real quick, and going through all this...
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And going through all this and deciding whether to permit or not permit it, I mean, I do appreciate the comments from our residents in regards to integrity of our neighborhoods, and it's been brought up by Councilmember Clapp about affordable housing and kid stock and having our kids go to our local schools. I do see affordable housing and these vacation rentals different, because I think that we could do as a council, as a city, give our citizens more opportunity for affordable rentals. That's just, there's a different issue with that. The second, second thing in looking at this, I've been trying to think of it and seeing, we have 36 active unpermitted vacation rentals, and how many housing do we have in the city? Or 187?
Yeah, check your internet.
Oh, check. Well, according to the staff report, it's 36. And it could be 100. How many, how many homes do we have in Ojai?
Around 3,600 houses.
3,600. So that's less than 1% of our homes. So I, I just, I, it's a slippery slope, I understand, but at the same time, I'm not fully convinced that these vacation rentals really affect our integrity, our neighborhood integrity. And for that reason, I, I still, I'm hesitant to shut the door on the issue and not present it to the planning commission. And looking at the staff report also, and how many cities have, have developed a policy towards, towards vacation rentals, I think there might be an opportunity. And listening to the letter from, from Mr. Eicher, from the Ojai visitor bureau, I just hesitate to just shut the door as a council member and not discuss it further. So that's, that's why I'm leaning towards a no vote on this, and I think we should, we should think about it more and not make a rushed judgment right now about how these vacation rentals are really affecting our neighborhoods, especially if we don't have as many complaints on record. I mean, I just feel like we need more input from our community, from our residents, and I think that we should offer the opportunity to our, to our citizens.
Madam Clerk, would you restate the motion?
The motion is to direct staff to draft an ordinance to disallow transient rentals in the city of Ojai.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment too. I'm going to vote against this motion, and it's not because I'm a believer that we want a proliferation of transient rentals in the, in the city, but we already have some. And I think that if we look at them realistically, and we look at them from the standpoint of the effect on the individual communities, and we have regulations in place for them, I do not believe transient rentals are bad for a community if they're well-regulated. We have rules in place as to where they are, the specifics about how many times they can be rented, and things like that. I find that many times people are looking to go visit places that are a destination, and they don't want to stay in a hotel room. They want to, they want to find a cottage. They want to find a house to rent. And I don't think that Ojai is doing itself a favor by slamming the door on that. However we want to regulate it, we ought to regulate it. Does it mean that we need to have neighborhoods that are all of a sudden inundated by these transient rentals? No. But we have them out there. We ought to regulate them for sure. We ought to collect tax from them for sure. And I just think that by saying we don't want them at all, just leaves the undercurrent of more people that are going to be doing it under the radar and not being able to enforce the TOT on them, which I think is a valuable part of the economy of our, of our city.
We have a motion on the table. Roll call. Blatz?
No.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Smith?
No.
Strobel?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm willing to make a motion, and this is to direct the planning commission to conduct public hearing on their proposed transient rental ordinance to implement the desired changes to make recommendations to the city council.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, could I add a, well, to me, it would have to be accompanied with their recommendations and their recommendations to council would include enforcement of the rules and regulations and eliminating non-permitted, non-permitted residences who are, who are in the same zone. In other words, that the planning commission should include, how are we going to enforce this?
I could amend that.
Okay. Try. I didn't do it well.
You're basically just looking for them to make sure that if they choose to recommend to the council any type of, of protocol or requirements, that they add a mechanism to enforce.
Right. And to, and to enforce the ones that are permitted and to eliminate the ones that are not.
Great. Thank you. Well taken.
Before I, I second that, let me ask Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Clark, does the planning commission have recommendation authority over enforcement? Or should they come back to us with their recommendation as to what we believe it should be, and then we direct staff to come up with enforcement?
I think, I mean, unless you give, specifically delegate them the authority, they would be simply advisory to you.
Okay.
And you still make the, you make that little decision.
Okay. Well, then let me ask Mr. Clark. Do we want the planning commission spending time on determining enforcement issues rather than looking at the real crux of the matter, which is what we want to do with these transient rentals?
I actually think that they're related, and that coming, coming up with a, part of coming up with a viable transient rental ordinance is also including a viable enforcement scheme. So I would think it'd be worth the effort.
Okay. Then I second the motion.
Okay. And I just want to be clear. We are not granting the planning commission enforcement authority.
No, absolutely not.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call. Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Okay. Good.
Are we done with this item?
It's only 9:30. We can go on for another two hours.
The next item on our agenda is website improvements and social media outreach. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Mr. McClary will be making this report.
Can we give James a moment to get up here?
Thank you. I was just going to say we need just a moment to set up here. Mr. Hahn is wearing multiple hats this evening, so. Well, while he is settling in, I will take the opportunity to introduce this item. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Steve McClary, Deputy City Manager. Staff has been tasked with doing a little research and coming up with some recommendations regarding the city's website, social media, and online engagement. I have been basically elected as the spokesperson for the group, but the, the analysis and work that went in the staff report was a team effort, and that team consisted of our city clerk, Rhonda Basor, our technical support specialist, Mr. James Hahn, and also Amber Young in the city manager's office. Are we ready?
Yes.
So this report really focuses on three related technology options for us, as I mentioned, city website, social media, and also online engagement. As the staff report states, each form of media has its own unique capabilities, and each requires a significant commitment of staff time to focus on maintaining it, updating it, and keeping it fresh. This report will recommend that we focus our limited staff resources on updating, increasing the functionality of our city website, and that we continue to monitor what other cities and jurisdictions are also doing. and that we continue to monitor what other cities and jurisdictions are also doing in terms of social media and online engagement. So, allow me to talk about each one of these, uh, points in a little detail. And then, uh, I will also ask Mr. Hahn to give a little, uh, to give a demonstration on, um, on what we would like to see in terms of a basic website. But before we get into that, um, a little history on the city's website. It's been in existence since two thousand and six. We currently contract through GovOffice. It is a very economical and simple system. It comes very cheap. We pay fifty dollars a month. So, uh, it's, it's about as bare bones as you, as you can get. It's very limited in terms of our abilities to be able to modify the platform and add and change data and content. Um, and again, it's really an old platform that was built, uh, using the technology of the time. And of course, technology has changed quite rapidly in this area in the last, um, nine, eight years. One of the options is that, uh, staff could build our own site using the open source platform method that Mr. Hahn is going to, um, go over in a little bit of detail here in a minute. There are some options. There are some advantages to that. Obviously, we would be completely in control of whatever that system was. Uh, it would be our responsibility to come up with the system, to maintain it, to change it, uh, to host it and all that. You could still do an external host, uh, which we do think, which, which has its advantages. An external host basically means that your website is not housed within your facilities or within your buildings. Having an external host, uh, that's what they do. They host websites twenty-four seven. They have the technical capabilities and the support crew to handle those types of issues. Uh, we, of course, are, are much more limited. We do not have twenty-four seven capability. Another option would be to, um, to go out and actually, um, go out and, and create an RFP and have somebody, a consultant, come up with a plan, uh, to, and design basically a website that would, that would meet everything that we're, um, hoping to, to bring and hoping to, to have offered to the public. Before I get into talking a little bit more about the social media and whatnot, would this be a good time to go through the open post? I'll, uh, I'll allow Mr. Hahn to go through that. Again, this is really, uh, an example to show, um, some of the capabilities and where websites have changed, and what we would like to see, uh, our new website, ultimately, if we can do that, what we'd like to see in terms of, of what it can do and where it could take us. So, I'll ask Mr. Hahn to go through that for you.
As Mr. McClary brought up, our old website was built in two thousand and six. There were no smartphones. There were no tablets. All you really had to concern yourself was, did it work on a computer? One of the limitations we've had is it doesn't, the, our current site does not scale well. And because it was proprietary, and we actually spent extra to get that banner that so many people love, it's very difficult to change. So, what I did is I re, I've built several websites, but this is a new tool. I have not used before. It's called WordPress. Um, I, I researched a lot of different, um, tools, and this one seemed to be pretty easy and straightforward. The beauty of it is, it's, it's completely open source and modular, which means that you basically install components as you desire. Um, so if you, if you look, this site is actually live. If you guys wanna check it out, it's www.ojiacity.org, which is what I'm proposing we change our website to because it just is easier than the current URL. And you'll notice it's a lot, there's not a lot of stuff going on, on the sides. This is just a homepage, and I even gave us a, um, link here for people to, it's a special mail, email I set up so people can make suggestions on what they would like to see on the site. Some of the things that I took into consideration are ease in navigation. One thing we can't do with our current site is rollover menus. Where here, you see, we have the new modern rollover menu. You just go hover over and you actually get a drop-down menu for each, um, each item. Another thing I, I did differently on this site is it's actually not hosting any documents. The way I'm doing it is actually hosting the documents through Google Drive, which gives you fifteen gigabytes for free. Our current website that we're paying fifty dollars a month for allows one gigabyte. So, we have the capability to, for example, host all the city resolutions as they come up. So, I actually threw a few up here. So, for example, you can go here to the two thousand and eleven resolutions, and you can click on any resolution you want, and it will take you to that, that document and give you a preview format. Something that I considered after the fact is, since we're already putting the dates here, I could make this a hyperlink, and it'll actually take you to the public meeting page because one of the things I think people would like is, um, to look at, um, our documents by meeting. So, if you go to the public meeting videos, for example, and I haven't been updating this since I, I built the site, so guess we've had meetings since then. But you go to a public meeting, and we have an iframe just like we do on our current website. But here we have this little link, meeting documents, and there's all your agenda packet. So, I think that'll make it a lot easier for people doing research. And like I said, we could link from the resolution to the, the meeting, which will have your entire agenda packet all in one place, and not having to bounce around. And the other thing about this is it's reactive. So, this is what it, our website would look like on a, a cellphone. This happens to be an iPhone. And here's how you navigate. You click on the, the button up here, and you can actually just get your entire link here. And, and it'll take you right where you wanna go. The other thing I did is I looked at our current website and saw how people are using it. And believe it or not, we get thirty thousand page views a month. Over seven thousand of those page views are actually coming to, um, live and work in Ojai. So, I'm, I'm looking at the, making this a little bit nicer. Of course, the rest of them are going into researching documents just like we, we would. But people visiting Ojai might wanna see something a little bit nicer than what we had. So, right now, I just have the exact same information we have about our parks as we do on the, the current website, but I've made it a, a little bit more visually appealing, I feel. And then something I noticed on our current website that I thought was kind of odd that nobody's caught before is it doesn't tell us where the, where each of these parks are, for example. So, what I did is I linked it to a, um, to a map. So, what it'll do is it'll take you and say, oh, there's Clef Park. Um, I know it's Clef Vista, but it was already on Google Maps as Clef Park, so I just accepted that. And then you want to find out how to get there. You type in whatever address you happen to be at, so. Looks like I miss all the... So, if we were at Public Works Office, for example, if I type that in right, it'll actually take you there. Just tell you how to get there. Looks like I got the address wrong, but it's taking us from the, um, post office to Clef Vista. So, you could be anywhere in the world, and it will tell you how to get to our parks. Okay, um, what else did I wanna show you guys? Oh, um, something else that we use our website for is to collect, um, input from the public. There's some really nice, um, pu, public forms tools. So, for example, in Public Works Department, let's say you wanted to report that there was a pothole on your street. You could come here, say, Public Works Request. Fill out this information, and what'll actually happen behind the scenes is it will email both Nina and Ruben about your request. So, um, and then I made this, um, this we already have on our, our existing website. You can just ask, say, if you come to contact us, give the contact information. And also, you can fill out and give a message. This will actually go to Amber, so. It's all live and working right now if you guys wanna check it out, so. Oh, and one more thing I think is kinda cool is I'm using Google also for the calendar. So, you come to the city calendar, and of course, it's not wanting to load right now. There we go. And we go to tonight's meeting, for example. And it's, it's nice. It tells us that, that it's here in the council chambers. We can click on the map, and it would do just like the park. It'll actually take us, show us how to get to here. But this is what I think is actually more cool, is you click on More Details, and there's your entire agenda packet. So, we can have that, so people aren't bouncing around looking for things. It's all here, and because we have a lot more storage capability, we can, we don't have to, as we do now, delete these after the meeting. They can s, stay searchable. Once we hit the fifteen gig limit, we can actually increase it. It's not, not a lot of money. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was something like ten dollars a month to jump up to a hundred gigabytes. So, way, way more than we have now, so. I guess that's pretty much my entire presentation, unless you have any questions about what I've done here.
James, are you gonna go over apps? Or is that later?
I haven't really put a lot of, no, I wasn't going to. I can tell you I don't think they're a good idea at this time. I did read this, just this last week, fifty-five percent of data breaches in government networks over the last year were, um, app-based attacks. I don't think we're ready to go down that road yet. We're not sophisticated enough to protect ourselves, frankly, so.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Clapp?
The banner at the top, I think it's nice. I'm not, but you know what I keep thinking is we have so many great artists in town. I was wondering if we could have some sort of a, people could submit banners.
This, I, I'm actually really glad you brought that up. I forgot about that. This particular banner is static. However, it is set up so that you can add multiple banners to the site, and every time you change page, it changes the banner. That is, gives you better performance than the scrolling banners that so many people do now. We could do the scrolling banner. That's easy to do. It's, it's just a matter of preference. But I, I kinda like the idea that, um, it's a static banner, but it changes on each page.
So, we could conceivably have sort, sort of citywide, maybe through the Arts Commission, submittals for, for contests for, how many banners would there be?
Uh, as many as you would want. It, it's not a static, right now, there's forty-eight pages, and, and I'm not even done.
You have as many as forty-eight different banners.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not, the way that it does it is it will randomly select one of your banners, so you do not have to have forty-eight. Every time you visit the site, it'll be a new experience, which will e, add to more repeat visits. I think it'd be a good thing. Like I said, if we decide, we could make them scroll through, but that takes more bandwidth, and I don't think it's, yeah.
I'd like to see something like that because there's so many good artists in town.
Yeah, and this, this banner is actually just a picture I took from, right. I, I thought it said exactly what the site should.
It is, it does. I like it. I think it's great. Great improvement.
Thanks.
And, Mr. Hahn, you...
Um, that, the, Suzie asked why the, the sidebar is dark. That is actually a sidebar where I can add things like a, um, a news ticker so that we can put in items. It'll just pop up there. Right now, I just have all the sidebar items turned off, but you can add more menu items over here.
Okay, Mr. Hahn, um, I may not put this together right, but help me out. And I see that Mr. Grand is back there. You have built what we are looking at in this presentation?
Yes.
And, and under the recommendations, the recommendation is that we, um, issue an RFP to secure a, a contract with outside, with an outside host. I wanna be clear on what we're, uh, proposing here. As an outside host, that would be just, that would be like storing our information. It wouldn't be building our website.
Uh, okay, to be, to be honest, um, there's actually two different things that, that we're talking about. A host, you're right, is just housing the website. Currently, this is housed on a server that's sitting in my office. The web developer, I believe, is also mentioned in there. That would be doing the work that I've done here. The, the thought was perhaps getting someone who looks at this, does websites every day as opposed to someone who just once in a while does them, might have a different perspective.
Okay, that's what I'm easing up on. You've given us a lot of information. I'm not, um, I'm, I'm not clear on, I wanna make sure that, that we give back to you clear direction, and that that direction fits with what he, what you think is the best recommendation for us. Any other questions from staff, from council?
I have a question.
Councilmember Clapp?
It's kind of, are you kind of leading up to the twenty thousand dollars? That's in, on, on page six dash four. Fiscal impact approved twenty thousand for fiscal year budget for website development and online, line interactive tools. That's a lot of money.
So, just to, to respond to that, the twenty thousand dollars is actually already in the thirteen, fourteen budget. All we're really recommending is carrying it over. And it's a pretty small amount for the, um, outreach benefit that we get by developing a functional website.
So, the twenty thousand would be...
It, it's already...
For what?
To hire, to, the RFP is to bring someone in to flesh this out and to make it as functional as it possibly can be, rather than doing it in-house.
Okay, now that's where I was headed.
So, have you researched what the average cost is for something like that? Where did you come up with the twenty thousand dollar figure?
Let Mr. McClary carry on.
Yes, we have. And, um, and really, that's part of the, uh, part of what makes this difficult. We could do a very simple, we could do everything in-house, and we could keep it very simple and very cheap. You could, I mean, the sky is the limit in terms of, you know, how much you wanted to engage somebody. You know, you could go gangbusters, and you could have a consult that came in and, you know, really spend a lot of time talking with people in the community and trying to apply all the cutting-edge technology. Or you could have somebody that says, hey, we just, you know, want you to take ten thousand dollars and give us your best effort to go out there and, and really analyze what, you know, what, tell, you know, listen to what we're telling them and, and what they're hearing and what the council members have said, and then to try to come up with a proposal and see if that's something that, that we would be willing to go forward with. You know, the, and, and it's, it's, to make it clear here, we're, we're very lucky to have Mr. Hahn, and we're very pleased with what he's developed here. Uh, the challenge for all of us with a small staff is being able to put your time and energy to, to focus a hundred percent on something like that, and be able to go out and kick over all the rocks and all that without sacrificing the other things that you're trying to do. But we certainly know that Mr. Hahn has the capabilities. It's, it's more just a question of how we best use our staff time. But, um, I, you know, and I think this is a, a good demonstration. We could do something like this in-house, but we're recommending that we, uh, spend a little bit of money to go out there and try to engage somebody who does this, um, uh, full-time and, and see what they can come, come back, uh, and with a proposal for us.
And, and you're saying that you, in, in your investigation, that twenty thousand dollars is a typical amount that would, that a web designer charges?
Well, we found a, a range of anywhere from, from nine to fifteen thousand dollars. So, the, the twenty is really a high-end number. Um, we could certainly fine-tune it to a specific dollar amount.
Attachment D shows a breakdown. We got, we did a design...
Attachment D shows a breakdown, we got, we did a design quote. So it just, like Steve said, it just depends on how.
Yeah.
How much we want.
Yeah.
Are you finished, Councilmember Clapp?
Yes, I am, thank you.
May I pro tip Smith?
I had a thought, last time I noticed, we give $50,000 a year to the Ojai Tourism Bureau, and they highlight Ojai quite a bit, and what's due here and all. Is there possible that we could request that they link up a little bit more to the city services and what's available, you know? I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Do we have a, somebody who's constantly working on a website with the idea of promoting as a tourist destination, which is our only business?
So the, the website that the Visitors Bureau uses has a completely different function from our website. I think you've heard us talk about pay-per-click and that kind of thing. What they're trying to do is identify phrases that people search when they're looking for a place to stay that hopefully is Ojai, and directing that to a website, and then directing the inquiry to the actual hotel operators. Which I don't, is a completely different function than what we're doing. I, I think that the beauty of an RFP is that we will get people to use their expertise, a variety of people in the industry to use their expertise to put together a suggestion on a way forward for us. And we can pick one of those, or we can choose not to pick one of those. But I think the effort of going through the exercise and finding out what we can get on this budget, and, and having all those options to look at and make a selection from is worth the effort.
Thank you. Do you, do you have anything to add to that, Mr. McClary?
Uh, no, I do not, thank you.
Well, I have a comment, so if you would just stay there for a moment. The council directed staff to upgrade our website, our social media, for better outreach. I, I cannot then say, but we're not going to give you any money to do it. I mean, you know, we either, we either are sincere in the concept and are willing to pay for it, or we're not. And Mr. Hahn has other duties to perform. See, I remembered that, Mr. Grant. And so, while Mr. Hahn could create this, we would in effect be losing other services, because I know you'd love to work 24/7, but. So, but what I want to say is, we ask for this as the council. We need to be willing to support it financially. Any other questions?
That sounds like common sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. McClary.
Would you like me to move on, continue with my staff report on the social media? So, uh, social media, you know, what we're talking about, that, you know, Facebook now has 1.3 billion active users, Twitter, over 600 million, Google Plus has over 540 million active users, LinkedIn has 277 million users. We hear a lot about social media and the ways that it can be used. We did survey some of the local cities, and we found, at least in Ventura County, that only the large cities are really implementing Facebook on a citywide level. We do have it in our recreation department, and we use that as a marketing and an outreach tool, and really just to focus on the recreation programs. And of course, there's also mention of the Historic Preservation Commission, also has an outreach Facebook page. But in terms of citywide Facebook in Ventura County, Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura are the only ones that do it right now. The challenge with social media is you've got to continually, you've got to continue to feed that fire if you want the engine to go down the track, that's the analogy I'm going to use here. Because if you, if you want to build up a following, and you want people to, to get the information when you put it out there, you've got to continually put things out there and generate a following. You can't just wake up one day and say, I've got some important information I want to get out, and decide to use social media, you're not going to have an audience there. And much the same, if you just put things out sporadically, you're not going to have an audience, so. We're not recommending going forward with the social media at, at this time, but keeping it as an option. Again, one of the, the big factors there is the amount of staff time that's involved. Most cities have a designated staff to oversee the responses and the postings, and they spend about 10 hours a week doing that. That is an option, though, that we, we could consider. We are recommending, however, updating and distributing the city's social media policy to the city council commissions, boards, and other pertinent personnel. Right now, that policy is only applied to the employees, so I believe we're looking for some direction from city council to be able to extend that policy to city council, commissions, boards, and well. Any questions on the social media aspect?
Okay, so there, there's actually two different things. As far as social media, you suggest that we just keep that as an option.
Correct.
And the second part of that is that we develop policies.
We have an existing social media policy, which is in the employee handbook. We're asking for direction to take that, it might need a little bit of modification, but then to bring that back as a policy that would apply to the city council, commissions, and other pertinent personnel. That way, we have something out there that, that covers those entities as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I, I, I think I'm just so excited that we're actually doing this. I cannot, when we did, did it at the Park and Recreation Commission, I thought it, it was great. My, I, I understand, social media, yeah, it does require somebody to actively post things, and we need somebody that is responsible, and that is going to be, preserve our values and be objective. But I do, I do hope that if, whatever we decide as a council, either be a freelance, a professional, consult with them also, what, their suggestions in regards to social media, and if, just get their advice in regards, because I know that there's constant, constant movement in technology. My sister, that's what she, she went to San Jose State, they lived there, San Francisco, and her boyfriend, and, and they constant, they're in that world of, of technology, and she tells me things that I, I mean, I, I don't even question. But it's so exciting that we're moving, and maybe getting somebody's advice on that could be beneficial for us, so. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other comments, questions?
How did, how do you, as a city, benefit from something like Twitter, or Facebook, or Pinterest, or?
Well, I would, I would say, if, if you have a need to get information out to the public, it can, it can serve that need. You know, the, the first thing that kind of leaps to my mind here is, you know, what would we do if we were in a, in a major emergency? Yeah, you, there, you know, that would be perhaps a, a tool. Of course, we have other ways that we can get information out, like, you know, VC Alert and things like that. But, you know, when you, when you look at it, I, I understand the nature of your question, it seems like it's been more geared towards, you know, entertainment and that type of thing. But, you know, it, it's certainly a way to announce information and get information out in a very quick and timely manner, certainly a lot faster than, you know, sending a press, press release, or posting something on your website. It's instant, it's immediate. You know, if we had a Twitter account, we would probably send a tweet out when we, like, say, when the nomination period opened for city council. You know, you could just send a quick thing of information out, and boom, they would get it right away, and they would have the information, the details. You put that on a website, they may or may not see it. You know, issue a, a press release, they may or may not see it. So I think the fact is, it's immediate, and it's, and you can customize it, and say, this is the information that I want, so that I know if it's something coming from the city of Ojai, or, you know, Disneyland, I can get that information right away, and I'm going to have it.
Madam Mayor, if I may also comment, the League of California Cities also did a workshop on social media and internet and interactive, so there's other cities actually doing it, they provide the data, and they also list the pros and cons when they're doing the successful. And, and I, I had to say, there was a lot of success stories, even for police department, just getting the word out, and how immediate it was. They've noticed that it's been, it's been very helpful. So there is also other, other cities that we, we could possibly look at, that have already, that are doing it, so. I'm, I'm not a social media guy myself, but I see the impact of it. I'm terrible with my Facebook, terrible, so I'll be the first one to admit.
I was actually able to get my picture on my Facebook page by accident, so. But, and I have it there mainly to allow me to see what other people are doing. But I had a question for Captain Kenny, and that is, or Chief Kenny, or one of those titles. Does the Sheriff's Department utilize the social media? Does the Sheriff's Department with Twitter and Facebook?
Yeah, Twitter, Nixol, Facebook, all those.
Okay. Do you see it as a benefit for the city of Ojai?
Well, it's like Steve said, you have to have constant information, you have to build a following. So you, if you have constant information you want to put out, it's a way of doing your community outreach and those type of things, but you've got to continually do it, and you've got to respond to people's questions and concerns, because they're going to be sending you information in requests. Someone needs to respond to that as well. We have a designated staff to do it for the Sheriff's Department. I do it here for Ojai PD, and I have designated staff at the PD that do it.
Okay, thank you.
Like City Watch, too, by the way.
Councilmember Clapp?
Yeah, I have to have this stuff with my business, and it is labor-intensive, and it does pull you away from other things. We talk about not having money for code enforcement, we have to, it's a priority issue. I think getting the website together is definitely where it's at, but.
And, and I totally agree.
Maybe Twitter, because you could have a Twitter account, be dormant, but people have to join your Twitter, you know? So it's not like you just have Twitter, and then everybody gets it, everybody has to sign up so that they get your Twitters. And it would be good for.
If they're tweets.
If they're tweets, Twitter, whatevers.
As much as I know.
Madam Mayor.
I'm inclined to.
And so, yeah, and so to me, it would be good for getting information out, but the, the caveat is that people have to also, you know, click and join into, into your Twitter account, so. I think the website's definitely, definitely happening, but I think, I think economically, it sounds like it's probably, those other things are down the road. When we get all that TOT from all those transient rentals.
And I agree with your, with your suggestion that we keep it as an option. I don't think at this point we're ready to jump into it. Any other questions? Would you like to finish your staff report?
Just the last thing, thank you, Madam Mayor. The one, the last thing that I wanted to touch on was the online engagement options. It's probably not a very good way to describe that. I'd be the first one to admit, I, I don't have a lot of experience working with these, or, or really of seeing how these are used. But there's some, actually, some very interesting emerging technologies, and I would say, as my quick caveat, that I, I would say we're probably just not quite at a position where we could really capitalize them. But there was one, it was suggested in this chambers a couple of months ago. They had done something down, I believe it was Salinas, where they had this online community engagement. And they really are some, some very powerful tools, and they're really designed to engage the public in using today's technology. But I would say we're just not quite there yet. We did look at those, and, and the engagement software ranges anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000. Again, much like Twitter, or some of those things, they certainly have value, but unless you have somebody there who can prop it up, and, 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 you know, tailor the information, respond to the information, then I would say it's probably not a good investment of your resources. But much like the social media, I would say it's something we really need to keep our eye on, and not necessarily say that we're just turning off that option. Because as we've seen, the technology changes very quickly. In 10 years, you, you take a look at, at what Mr. Hahn has designed, and how fresh and clean and open and inviting it looks to the way websites looked 10 years ago, or even to our current website. So it's very important that we continue to keep an open mind of these options, and see how we might be able to use them in the future. That's my staff report.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes, I, I absolutely love the, the fact that we're going towards that mindset, and I understand that right now, we need to be smart about it. But my only comment is that we're, we're actually, we're, we're. My worry some is that we're not even close to being current with technology and the tools we could possibly use. So I would love to figure out how we could get that change of mind, thought process changed in the, in the future, so we could be actually current. For example, continuing to respond to citizens' emails and phone inquiries using existing technology rather than contract online, online engage, engagement services. We, we still have to respond to those emails and phone inquiries, but there's tools that you could do it online right then and there, and have it be quickly done with. So what I'm just saying is that I, I know this is a big step forward, I, I want to still keep this very positive, but let's just keep, I, I, I would like to encourage us to start to keep thinking about how we could access these tools so that it could benefit us, because I just see it as being really beneficial to, to staff, so.
I agree, if I could just quickly just follow up on that, that's, that's where we think the consultant could really play a strong role. They may be able to say, look, these, here are some very simple, cost-effective things that you can do, so, you know, don't, 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 don't miss that opportunity, so, good point.
Any other questions from council to staff?
Thank you, Mr. McClary. Excellent job on this report. I'm just amazed that I read it a couple, you know, it may be that I'm so technologically challenged, but even after reading it a couple of times, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, it's like, what? I do have one speaker card, Steve Wood. Is Steve still here? Okay, anyone else in the public wish to address the website improvements issue? Council?
Do we need a motion, because we're going to spend some money, or?
Yes.
Yes, we need a motion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the recommendation as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Some clarification. As outlined in the staff report, so that would mean proceed with the RFP for the website?
That's correct.
Hold social media with, as an option, but develop policies to assure appropriate use?
Correct.
And hold as an option on lay, online engagement?
Correct.
Roll call? Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Struble?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll recess as the city council, and convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. Our item is consent calendar warrants and minutes. Any discussion, motion?
Of to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Clapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strubble?
Yes.
We'll adjourn the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting, and reconvene the city council. Reports from council members?
I do have a couple of questions, and, and I. And I don't know if this is appropriate for him to say it, but just, for reports, it just dawned on me, and, and thinking about the rehab or, or social living ordinance, are we going to have that back? Or should we put that on the list of things to look at for our priority list?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, unclear on what we're doing with the rehab and, and social living ordinance that we are talking about, if we're going to revisit it, or.
Group homes?
Or group homes?
Oh, group homes, yeah. We will, at, at a staff level, we'll look at it and assess it, and report back to you.
And then also, with this whole thing with Golden State Company, is it possible? And then also, with this whole thing with Golden State Company, is it possible to pull up their franchise agreement and look at it?
Yeah.
And, and see if, I mean?
So, we, we do have the franchise agreement. The franchise agreement is quite old, but understand this, it grants them use of city right-of-way. It doesn't regulate the water utility. So, so the regulation of the water utility has been preempted by the PUC. So, you know, a lot of people have thought that the franchise is our tool for regulating Golden State Water. Our remedy for problems that we have with the water system is to complain to the PUC, or to get cooperative action from Golden State Water. Yes, I can get you a copy of that.
Yeah, and I don't know if another council member would like to put it on the agenda or anything. I just, I don't know if there's any.
Why don't I, why don't I circulate the franchise to everybody, and then if someone wants to put it on, they can let me know.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a copy, so you can leave me out.
I have a copy.
Okay, so only Councilmember Laura needs a copy.
The newbie needs it.
Any other reports from council?
Yes, I just wanted to report the music festival was a smashing success. The director of the music festival was a chap named Jeremy Dank, who you could hardly pick up a newspaper or an article that didn't refer to Jeremy Dank in the last month or so. And he did a terrific job with a terrific program. I mean, the music was so accessible, the songs, everything about it. People say it's, the music's too deep for me, and so, there was one concert that was a little over my head, but otherwise, it was fabulous. And the new shade that's over the Bowl, you know, it's much bigger now, so you almost have almost all the, the seats that are in the shade. So, once again, kudos to the Music Festival Board, and I've also, and also, we now have a Libby Bowl Foundation, who have distributed a pamphlet about all the events that are happening in the Bowl, and I think there were fourteen events this summer. So, we were all concerned, well, what else is going to happen there besides the music festival? And I, you know, it's starting to happen. I think it will take about five years before it takes off. One of the big problems with having events is that if they're not free events, some of them were, you, you need to have assurance that the person who's, you know, to the promoter of the event, that they're going to have a certain take from the box office. And so, I think the Libby Bowl Foundation has been working that out, so that they're able to offer a certain take, because, you know, nobody's, you have to put up all that trouble and everything needs to put on an event, and then if you have, you expect forty percent, or sixty percent ticket sales, and you only get ten, you know, they, their costs were still the same. So, that was, been a problem, and that's starting to get worked out. Also, kudos to Parks and Rec, the fountain, it looked fabulous. When you came out of the park at ten PM, and it was glowing, and all the, all the tiles were, were fixed, oh my God, what an improvement. It just looked beautiful, so. We, you know, the, the results of all that tile work and all is showing, and this, it just didn't look shabby anymore. It looked very well capped, and so, I was thrilled with all that. I also am thrilled that we have a local community hospital. We are so fortunate to have the ER. I personally was visiting there by ambulance because I got bit by a black widow spider, who was cozying up to me in my bed, of all things. The pain was unbelievable. I just thought I had been electrocuted badly. And I was so grateful that we have our local hospital, so they're finishing their remodel. I don't know when we'll be dedicated, but it's, if you go by, you'll notice it's, things are really coming together. So, again, be grateful that we have our small community hospital. The ER is a very, very potent part of that place, and just think, if it wasn't here, how far it would be to go down the hill. So, we are very, very fortunate to have our hospital. We need to support it, and we need to, whenever possible, they say, where do you want to get your blood test? Where do you want to do this? Support our hospital, because every, you know, we are very grateful to have that.
Get bit by a black widow.
Oh my God, it was unbelievable. I saw her scurry away, too. I mean, don't get, don't cozy up to a black widow.
Any other reports from council? City manager?
I just wanted to mention that we have finally got our first loan payment on the city loan. The other thing is that it appears that there may be some movement on the interest rate issue. There are now other cities that are upset about the fact that the, the state's being totally unfair about how they force us to calculate interest, and I think the city of Glendale's taking the lead. Our city attorney's been in contact with them and talked to them. So, fingers crossed, maybe we'll be able to collect more of the loan than we thought.
Who's the lead, so Glendale might be the lead agency, or?
Yeah, Glendale has the same issue on a much, much, much larger scale.
I bet they do.
And therefore, they're, they are looking more seriously at, they want to pursue a political solution, also trying to work with the state, but they're also prepared to look at litigation, and therefore, take a, a lead on the, the cost and organization litigation. Then we'll try to put a group of cities together that, that are in the same. We were kind of early in getting our, our issue out, out from Department of Finance, and now other agencies are starting to identify it. So, whereas a month or eight, two months ago, we were asking around, nobody saw it as an issue. All of a sudden, you know, we're getting emails, hey, 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 did you hear about?
This was the first round where payments could be made, and a lot of them got denied, and so, everybody's opened their eyes.
Mr. Fletcher?
That was it?
Madam Plurk?
Nothing to report.
Our chief of police, Mr. Kenny?
No, not much. I just handed out a little pamphlet, though. I don't know if you guys got them, that one of our sergeants made up. We're going to be putting those on cars at trailheads, but they kind of warned people how to be safe with their valuables and things of that nature, being summers here, and people are going to be using the trails and whatnot, so. Other than that, that's it.
I have a question. The, the discussion was about how only helmets were getting ticketed, and nothing was being done about the bikes and the scooters.
Correct. We did cite a couple of bikes, two bikes, eleven helmets, and when the juvenile he was talking about was arrested and lodged at City Hall, or Juvenile Hall, for obstructing an officer. But we do cite for the bicycles, but for the most part, the bicycles are, they're, they're younger, at least the bikes that we've contacted, if they're under the age of fourteen, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, because if those tickets go to the juvenile court, they're dismissed.
Yeah, I heard something about that. So, you issue them, but there's no enforcement, so it's almost meaningless.
That's correct, and even from the age from fourteen to seventeen, there's not going to be a fine, it's going to be maybe community service. Your fines come from the adult citations.
And just to add to that, we received an email regarding the skate park and enforcement, and so you'll see a lot of the information he just mentioned on the email.
All of this, too?
Mm-hmm.
It's on the diat, so.
Well, no, I received this at home, so it was emailed, it has all five council members on here. June the nineteenth.
Want me to resend it?
Yes, please do. It's so many, I must have overlooked it.
It's on the diat?
No, no, she received it. It was that, June nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
See, it has you, has you on there. See, I could understand my having.
It might be on my email.
Well, I could understand it if it was, if I was having the problem, because Time Warner has been having difficulty with their emails.
Oh, no.
For like, several days, but, but, and of course, I was, because of that, I wasn't able to get their notices of, gosh, we're sorry that our problems are causing.
Yeah, because they were emailed.
It's like I was going to send you extra money, but I had already sealed the envelope.
Yeah, it looks like.
Suzie Mears, Finance Director, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Nothing. I have a thank you for your announcement.
Mr. McClary?
Just a, a quick announcement, just because I know there was a lot of discussion with the skate park and Parker Mac. The Parks Commission normally meets the first Thursday of the month, that would fall on July third. They're not going to be meeting at that time. Instead, we're going to be meeting on the last Thursday of the month. That's just the way it worked on the calendar, so that meeting is going to be July thirty-first. That's the next Park and Recreation Commission meeting will be on July thirty-first. They will not be meeting on July third.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
I'll be brief, too, with the last moment here. And I just want to say that we made it. Appreciate the council and the city manager's commitment of the capital improvement funds, because we're wrapping up the million-dollar paving job, so we're just on a punch list of items right now, but it was a fairly successful job. We did peel back a lot of the old roadways and found all kinds of tricks in there. We had to correct a few things, but I think we got through it. And I think tonight, you just approved the design contract. We're going to keep that on a real slim percentage for next year, and we plan to pave those other streets for the upcoming budget for this fall, so that'll include more streets over in Golden West, some of the, the area behind Vons, Descanso, and also Matilla, coming right through town. So, we'll look forward to that.
I noticed that the front of City Hall's been replanted, it looks good.
It's great.
And, Mr. Grant, I received an email from Linda Harmon, and I just want to make sure that I don't see you on the list. I just wanted to make sure that you received this, because it's addressed to you.
I'm not sure what it was.
Let me give you, because I just want to make sure that you have this.
Thanks.
And we've had inquiries going back and forth regarding food trucks. Is that something we need to address? Is that something that needs to be on the council's agenda?
No.
Sounds like we can't do anything.
I mean, they're.
From what, from what I heard from Mr. Fletcher, that we cannot regulate them, that there's, it's been taken care of in the California courts, and they're legal, and there really doesn't seem to be anything, reason for us to take staff time with it, matter, is that correct?
We can't regulate the time, we can't regulate them separately from any other vehicle. The Health Department has most of the substantive control over, and, and, so that's mostly where, we, we can't restrict their parking separately from any other vehicles.
And Mr. Clark responded to the inquiry regarding the food trucks, so that's all we need to do, correct? Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Meeting adjourned.